Are the mics on? Okay, they're on. Good afternoon. And welcome to the work session on April 15th. And I look around the table, we're all here this evening. So we'll just get on with the agenda items for discussion. And the first one, staff will present information on the estimated FY14 expenditures. Brian Dawkins, City Manager, Terry Canada, Budget and Research Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As we continue our journey through getting a budget to council for approval later in June, there are a lot of moving parts to this. So tonight, we are going to be looking at the expenditure side for the general fund. So if you go into tonight's agenda, we want to kind of step back real quickly and talk about the budget process to date. I will be then providing an overview. And then Terry Canada, our Budget Manager, will get into the general fund on the operating departments' budget highlights, as well as initiatives and even personnel. So we have a lot to cover tonight. The calendar, though, just as a reminder, is we have had, you know, several meetings with council. This even goes back to last year when we had tax policy discussion. But most recently, last week, we talked about the revenue projections. Tonight's the expenditures, and you can see next Monday, we'll be looking at the capital improvement plan, enterprise funds, which are water, wastewater sanitation, and also our debt service. We will then go into a public budget forum that Finance Department and I will be heading up to interact with the public. So we already have that scheduled for May the 1st. Then we get back to council on the draft budget, May 6th. If we need additional work session, we have one slotted for the 13th. And then, when we adopt the tenet of budget, May 20th, that sets the upper expenditure limitation. So tonight's real important to get a good sense of the expenditure side of the House, especially for the general fund. Then marching our way through final budget, June 24th, and then the tax levy, July 8th. So where we are to date, the budget process, we've been working with the departments very closely. We, our approach was to hold them to last year's base. So they had to go back and look at the line items. There's been a lot of focus this past year on their existing budgets. So when we say held to last year's base, it's also challenging the base and seeing where our expenditures, really, are they, do they fit with what the activities are. It's important to point out on the next bullet, the base budgets do not include one-time items. That's a one-time expenditure for special projects, equipment, those types of things. And then the supplemental requests. We, we had a lot of requests this past, a couple of months ago, and as we look through those, tonight, you'll see those that were recommended for approval. But we were able to absorb a lot of those into the base budget. Very important to point out, as some of these needs were addressed, we were able to absorb it. We do have some one-time additions, and we also had some ongoing needs, if you will, that we had to really make sure that we were able to cover. So it, this does not tonight look at the not recommended on the supplementals. But I want to give just a quick recognition to our two deputy city managers, Bob Beckley, as well as Winnet Reed, working very closely with their directors throughout this process. These, the information was shared with the departments several times as we went to, as we got to this point. So department heads have worked hard, there's been a lot of collaboration. You'll see that as we work our way through tonight's presentation. So the framework, just talk about how we approach a budget. We and council has absolutely brought this up. We look at accountability. So some of the things that we just put up here, accountability is throughout our operations, but it's a couple of things that we know we need to complete. Citizens Library, as well as a 911 facility. These are dollars that were appropriated by council, and it is important to get those projects on time and on budget. So that's part of the accountability. The other is that we are now taking, integrating performance measures in everything we do. And if you, a little later tonight, we'll actually have our presentation on performance measures. So you can see the importance of putting performance as it relates to what we're trying to accomplish as an organization. Second bullet point or key point is respect and protect our taxpayers. So the approach that we took is to hold the line on the budget. Let's, this is not an opportunity, it's still unknown where we're going with this economy. So it's, it's really to hold the line on the budget. We do not have a lot of flexibility in adding new programs, services, and employees. At the same time, maintain our quality of life. We are recognized as having a high quality of life by our citizens, and we feel that the monies that we get from our taxpayers ought to, ought to help ensure that. Third point on, on our framework was be efficient. One thing I'm pleased to announce is that we are keeping our city staff levels at 511. This has been several years now that we've kept it at 511 without asking council, because council by policy, you set the total number of employees that we can have as an organization. We, it's been set at 511. We've worked very hard this year to keep it at 511. I will quickly tell you that next year, especially given the growth that we're projecting, that will be nearly impossible to, to reach next year. But at the same time, there was a lot of work even to keep it at 511 this year. Departments giving up positions for the benefit of others and, and all of us working together.
Joe has something to ask, or say.
What was the authorized position at the heights prior, right prior to the recession?
Yeah, it was like 90-something.
It was in the 590s. So yes, it has dropped substantially since then.
Knew the answer, I just wanted to make sure for the public's sake that they get it on record.
It was nearing 600, and, and now we're down, and we're 511. So we've reduced employee count substantially over time. We also restructured city departments, and you've heard part of that already, and we continue to look at it. Moving some divisions to others where it makes sense, like code compliance over to development services. And, and really seeing during, through these restructures, are we being more efficient? Are we being more accountable? So those are things that you've already been briefed on through other presentations, but that's part of the framework that we look at. Results solutions. You have to have the results. You know, what gets measured gets done, but we have to make, make sure that our, our results are meaningful. And one of them we have on there is, we need to maintain a high level of citizen satisfaction. We will be doing later this year another outreach to our citizens. We haven't really determined the venue, but we will be looking at, are we maintaining that high level of satisfaction? And the other is grow a healthy economy, grow jobs. It is through job growth and investment by the private sector, private businesses, that really build our, our city. So those are some of the results solutions we're looking at. I would say just part of the framework and a sneak look under the curtain, if you will, on opportunities that, that we're looking at, is we have a license plate study that's in here, and that's, that's about $10,000. But the importance of that, as the council looks at tax policy, how much of our sales taxes coming in from non-citizens? We did this back in 2000, again in 2002. Granted, we were a much smaller city then, less than 20,000 population, but it showed that only 18% of all our sales tax revenues were paid by Goodyear residents. So we're very curious as far as, is that still, you know, what is that today when you look at tax policy? Because the important, tax rates as well, because the important thing is, is how much is tourism adding to our revenues?
Terry?
And I know you told me this, but I don't remember. When you do that study, does it break down what cities everyone's coming from, or if they're far, so you can get that much detail from that?
Councilmember Lortano, the previous study did. I'm not sure exactly, we, we haven't gone out and secured a firm yet. We used Behavioral Research Center before, and they actually went out and looked at license plates. But it was, you were able to look at it by zip code. And you found out how many were out of state, so you really got to see some interesting shopping characteristics.
Joe?
Is it possible to break it down by three main categories? Who's shopping in our restaurants, retail maybe, and what's the third, food?
It's a great question. It's something we can, you know, consider. You know, so you're looking at grocery stores, let me back up a little bit, grocery stores...
General retail.
General retail, what was the third?
And restaurant.
And restaurants. It, it is, it's very possible, because you're looking in those parking lots of those types of businesses. So it's something that we'll just see how we can include it.
Joanne?
You know, I appreciated when it, when it occurred 10, 12 years ago, and I can see why it would be important now, just from my own, looking at my own client list, I know how it's changed. But I guess my question, if, when you were talking to this consultant, I would ask the question on, when is the best time to do this? Because you're going to have a, you know, I hate for you to do it during spring training time. I mean, we want it an accurate count. And so when you really, you know, the consultant's going to know best. Do we want to do it when the snowbirds are in town? Or do we want to do it when this is the true picture of the region who's shopping here? I guess that would be, I'd be curious to hear what the consultant said was the best option there.
Thank you, Councilmember Osborne, absolutely. And it's at, when do the snowbirds come in, which are part of our residents versus tourists? And that's a great question to ask the consultants.
Of course, and you look at it too. I can understand what Joanne's saying, but then you look at that time, and that's about time that the holidays start. So now you've got that holiday in there, so I, I'm anxious how...
I know.
...you would discern that, you know? But you're, you're right, I can understand your question.
Yeah, the October to May window is...
Yeah, anyway.
Right, okay.
We're, we're not the experts. We're going to, we're going to...
We will, we will seek experts...
It really depends on the people we pay.
We will seek the experts' opinions. Thank you. The other thing on cost of business, some of the things are just going up in price. And remember, we talked about really trying to hold the line on budget, but there are things like booking fees, $100,000. We can't control that. We're looking at, for fire, the self-contained breathing apparatuses, have to maintain those at $300,000. Technology replacement, that's at $800,000. We have to replace a lot of our hardware. And if you have questions, as we get into the supplementals, we do have department heads that can answer questions as council wants. So it isn't the time to ask me. Those would be happy to bring up directors as timeless.
Some of those costs, probably the citizen would love it if the light changing, changes, the timing of the lights. If, if some of that electronic equipment will work in that direction.
Yes. The impound yard for police, you know, that was one that came through an audit, and, and so that's $80,000. Park equipment replacement, you know, our citizens use our parks a lot, and we have about $315,000 that works into the replacement associated with our parks. Pavement preservation, we've looked at adding another million dollars this year, so it'll be over $2 million on that. And then plant tree replacement, I know it's near and dear to a couple of our council members' hearts, but that's in at $100,000. Now, a lot of these are one-time dollars, so they're, but we will have ongoing as part of these as well. So that's a quick peek under the curtain, if you will. We'll be hitting several of the key items on supplementals. But on the, I wanted to talk a little bit about navigating the Great Recession. I think, and you could flip the, there we go. This was something you saw when you looked at tax policy back in the fall. And the things that we have tried to, tried to do is avoid fixed expenses, because that just drives up, that increases the following year's budget when you add fixed expenses. Focus on core services, diversify our revenue sources, and long-term financial planning. And that has to do with the contingency fund, implementing the ballpark repayment contingency plan, and refinancing to get some lower interest rates without extending the term of the loan. And then finally, investments, innovations for long-term benefits. And that gets into some of our water, wastewater, Adam and comes to mind, what we're doing out in Sonoran Valley with our fire crew. And, and then also, what can we do with our reclaimed water to really try and reduce our cost for water as well, getting the credits back for that? The next slide is making sure we do have adequate reserve funds, using one-time revenue for investments, for capital improvements. So that's, that's worked out well. Communicating with our stakeholders. We do a lot of budget presentations, we've done several. We've, we've done a lot of different types of communications, and we want to continue with that. And letting them know, you know, quite frankly, on our taxes, where we're standing. So a lot of communication. Implement the performance measures, you'll have that a little bit later tonight. And then finally, a lot of organizational design and processes we put into place. So it's able, how we were able to, over the last few years, to work through this Great Recession, and those were things that we kept near and dear as we even prepared this budget.
Joanne?
Brian, the question has come up a couple of times, at least from me. And on the adequate reserve funds, especially after the conference that Bill and I attended, we are, we are, you know, really over the amount that they would suggest as being what you need for your, your reserve funds. And I believe that it's a four-month saving, is that, or is it by a percent?
It's four, four months operating, yes.
So could you tell me, after going through the recession, and I don't know that we really went below the 16 million, maybe we went down to 13, I'm not sure, 16?
16.3 million, yes.
Okay, so we really didn't even touch it. Which, to this city, really was, you know, something, the most devastating really thing that we've had occur. What would you say, if we continue to hold on to four months, where, you know, I've been hearing from conferences, that's, we are higher than most people need to be, what are we saving for? What is the, what is the, you know, we don't have hurricanes, we don't have tornadoes, what is the thing that, knock on wood, what is, what is it the, the thing that we really need to save our money for? Is, is it because water, which would be, you know, something that would be of terrible tragedy to us? If that was an issue, do we not have enough saved in the enterprise fund for that? Would this be something that that would kick in for? I'm just trying to figure out, what is our emergency that we need four months' worth of operational income saved, when other people are saying that's too much? So I need some help with that.
And added to that, I think the other one's, it was a three-month, is that when you did that presentation? It seems to me that three months, was that correct?
Yes, our, our practice and policies have been four months, and I was going to ask our finance director to talk about a little bit of a shift in policy direction that is looking at our, what our reserves are. So Larry?
Let me start by work, okay. I'm going to start by working backwards from the four months to the three months, and go back to the conversations that we had one year ago on this very issue in the general fund. Our policy has stated four months. Actually, our charter states four months, but our charter states that accumulating up to. We are not at four months for that purpose, you are not restricted to be at four months. And I think the conversation that we had a year ago was that four months did seem a little bit high. One of the concerns that I raised is with bond rating agencies, I discussed with two bond rating agencies. One said, as long as you're reasonable, we'll be okay. The other said, yes, but if you go against your own policy, how do we know you won't go against it again? And so you, as a group, I thought, came up with a pretty good alternative last year. What we said was, let's take the four months down to three months, but we'll keep the balance at the 16.3 million dollars. So we did not take the cash. So that's one of the budget policy changes that you made a year ago, that in this year's budget document will be documented, to, to bring that down to the three months. The question, I, I've heard all kinds of levels from that, and actually, some of what the information that you received at the conference paraphrased some information from my organization, but didn't necessarily do, what, what the context of it was more that many communities are in the 17% to 18% range, but individual circumstances may vary. And so as we're looking at it at this point in time, we're looking at, when does that 16.3 million hit the three months, and then at that point, we can have further dialogue? We're really wanting to keep that cash. One, that our cash flow issues are always solid. Two, if there is a natural disaster-type event, that you have the mechanism to be able to deal with it and not literally break the bank. Major capital items, as you've described, probably not the best source to fund a major capital item moving forward, unless, again, it comes on an emergency basis.
Joanne?
Well, and I appreciate, and thank you. I knew we had spoken about it, but I never, I did not remember what we actually came to as a finality of it. And so, you know, I, I appreciate us being conservative, and, and that's a good thing. But at the same time, I was sitting there thinking, we didn't touch it when we had this financial issue. So what's the, the devastating natural issue that, that we would be talking about? And that's why I was concerned, that maybe it was water, maybe it was, you know, I was just trying to think of scenarios that would take us to that point, you know? And, you know, I appreciate that remembrance, so that will help. Bill, do you have any thoughts on that?
No.
Gotcha.
No, just to follow up on what Larry mentioned, what's critical is any quick shifts in things, stirs up the financial community from bond raising, et cetera. So if you're going to do it, you want to do it in a gradual way, so that they don't see that flexibility, especially when you're going against your policies, in which will affect our bond rating in a negative factor. At some point, we're going to be borrowing again, and you don't want to have the interests or be in the condition of some of our other cities fighting their bond ratings as a result, so.
The only thing is that we navigated through this without doing that. And we made other adjustments, which, to me, is probably adjustments we needed to make anyway. And we've gotten ourselves down to sort of conservative tight, you know? And there, and like you say, because it is one-time money, it's not like we can spend it on these big projects that we have out there that will have ongoing expenses. So I'm kind of, you know, I'm kind of, kind of okay with it. I'd rather have that security. But it sure can be up for another discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. The next slide is maintain a fiscally responsible budget. And given that we do have, the nation and the state provide some risk factors that we cannot control. The national, it's everything from consumer confidence to the sequestration and slow and cautious economic recovery that we keep hearing out of Washington. The state, the challenge they have is there's a heavy reliance on sales tax, the temporary tax sunsets on May 31st of this year. And we're also looking at, there's changes in legislation, such as a property tax proposition that limits our assessed valuation growth. And then we have the one, of course, that's near and dear to our hearts currently, on the Governor's Transaction Privilege Tax Simplification Task Force, or what we call TPT. But those are things that are uncontrollable by us, it causes us to be cautious as, as we develop budgets. I do want to point out just very briefly, on April 3rd, there was a presentation to the governor's staff by, to the state legislature by several economists. And a couple of things that they pointed out, and this was on April 3rd in the Arizona Republic, but federal budget cuts, the impacts remain unpredictable. They are looking at the state's spending to outstrip collections by fiscal year 2015, 2016. That is a bit unnerving, quite frankly. They do look on positives, the economic growth for this coming year, 5.3% to 7.2%, and that amounts to an additional $640 million in surplus to the tax. But again, two years later, they're going to burn through that. So again, very cautious times. They're saying that there's not growth in corporate business income tax, and a lot of that is because of the tax credits that are out there. Inflation is going to continue to hit them on education for, especially K through 12. And then the, again, back on the tax, sales tax simplification, it could be millions of dollars that are lost on that. The swings are anywhere from a positive $23 million to a negative $72 million. So because of the unpredictability, we feel like we need to be very cautious as we develop this budget, for your consideration. That's all good news, right?
That's the wonderful news.
Now, the next slide, and I have two left before I turn it over. This is a five-year forecast, we actually provided this back in October. A bit, I don't know what to say about our soothsayers to my right, which is the finance and budget staff, very close on their projections. This was, again, done in October, and you'll see that the ongoing revenues and expenditures are very closely, very consistent with what we came up with our 14 estimates that are now being discussed. So I know there's a question, if I remember right, from last week, how close, or would we know last year or last fall, you know, what the projections were? And you never know, but the point is, is that we did come in pretty close with our current projections as well, from about six months ago. And then my last slide, this is a general...
Excuse me, what question from Joe?
Did you just go back to that prior slide? Again, I, it's my understanding, this is what I had mentioned, I guess, last week, the difference between that line and that blue, that's the bond, you know, that's the money that we're set asideing for the ongoing, which is for the, so that we have money to pay that, that spike in debt payment when it comes. We can use it for one time, but the ongoing's set aside. So I really appreciate that policy, because that way, we're not pushing down the road somebody who may not be here, an issue that they'll have to deal with as a result of us not making good decisions. So to me, this is a good decision.
Yes, I think the council that is here in 2017, 2018, 2019, is really going to appreciate your, your vision, seriously, with where that sets us up in the future. And we have this slide in again later, so, but, but you can tell, again, that we're holding pretty close on our, our projections. And then finally, the general fund operating budget history, you can see how we have grown. We are looking at about a 3% increase over our FY, fiscal '13 budget. So we're going from $66 million to a projected $68 million, again, and that's on the expenditure side. So very important to, that we kind of step you through some of the elements that cause that 3% increase. So if there are any questions to this point, I'll turn it over to Terry Canada, our Budget Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And as Brian said, I'm going to focus in on the ongoing supplementals and the one-time, and so I'll be talking about that 3% plus any one-time needs that were addressed in the budget. Just as a reminder, this is the chart that outlines the categories of operating budget. We have personnel services, and that does include all employee costs, such as salaries. It would be our retirement packages for the different retirement plans that we have, health insurance costs, workman's comp, taxes, payroll taxes that the city needs to pay. The contractual services, which represents about 20%, is the next largest category, and that is anything that we pay to an outside vendor. It also includes some large items, such as payments to, for water consumption, that we actually buy the water services, and APS, SRP, gas, things like that. And then the commodities are things, if you can just think in terms of consumable items that are less than $5,000, so they're just supplies to keep us up and going. And then I did go ahead and include, we do have in the ongoing, is figured in, there's a small debt PIC payment, it's about less than $1 million, and then the transfers. But we do include those, because we are going to keep having those reoccurring payments. I wanted to kind of bring you back to last sessions that we had with the departments, a number of opportunities and challenges were identified. And so I just wanted to, as a reminder, put some of the major focal points here. As we move through the presentation tonight, you'll see that a number of these are addressed and, within the supplementals. The other thing that we thought we'd do, after Brian has explained the supplemental review process, was a couple of months long. It doesn't, it doesn't happen overnight, we do the base budgets, and then the departments put together the supplements. A lot of scrutiny is involved with that, measuring against trending, what they have spent before, what's available in their base budgets, before it actually becomes an add to the budget. And then you'll see, we're beginning to link these things to the strategic action plan, and then hopefully in the future, maybe in subsequent budgets, we'll also link it to performance measures. The supplementals, then, once they are approved and they become part of the base budget, then they're monitored. Make sure that what the money that was approved and you allocated went for the program or service that it was intended for, or if not, what came up, and, you know, what were the, the substitution plans there. The other thing I thought I'd add here, you see the little icons on the side, which should be coming familiar to you. Elaine's going to talk about these, or, I'm sorry, Kim talked about these last week, I believe. And so I'm just trying to, again, put the puzzle together here, so you'll see these icons. And what we did, we went through all the supplementals, and we identified which focused area it would apply to. And so you can see you're moving your community ahead throughout these supplementals. And so you can see you're moving your community ahead throughout these supplementals. With that, I'll move on to the departments. We just are going to, again, address the major operating areas. This is within the general fund. And so I'll point out here, this is public safety. Again, police is about 15.6 million, fire service is about 12.6. We talked in a lot of detail a couple of weeks ago about what makes up that base budget. So I'm going to focus in on the ads. You can see there are a number of supplements that are listed here. I'm going to take a minute to explain too. We did have a supplemental summary that did not get in the Dropbox, but was added today. This is all the detail on the supplementals that will be listed tonight and we'll be talking about, both the ongoing and the one-time for general fund. And if you have any questions as we go through these, we have the directors here, as Brian said, or we would also be happy to follow up throughout the week, and then we can answer any questions or have the information also as part of next week's budget session when we talk about the enterprise funds and the CIP.
Joe has a question.
When's the best time to answer the question? For example, on this particular slide, I see an additional $100,000 for overtime for, I guess, is it police? And what's driving, what's driving those costs? Would we want to do it now, or are you going to go over all this at another point? I'm just asking, what's the most efficient way of addressing this?
It's probably best to do it while we're on the specific slide, and then the director can address any other questions you would have about their area.
Okay.
Do you like?
Yeah, I'd like to know what's driving those additional costs on the overtime.
Thanks, Larry.
It's on the second page.
Right here. Oh, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Councilmember Pizzillo. We've had several significant events this year that have really impacted the overtime at the PD. And I just want to say that we are being very responsible. We encourage and sometimes mandate the use of flex time. We just can't always do that. For example, our patrol squads are staffed with six officers. Usually, there is always one officer either on vacation, attending school, attending a training, or whatever. When it gets, when there's one off already, we have to pay overtime when another officer is called in. But, so we are very responsible. We're trying to bring the cost down as much as we can. But we've had a lot of big events, and although we're a very safe community, we've had some homicides. We've had some bank robberies. We've had some marijuana grows, some other things. We're probably triple the number of SWAT callouts this year that we've had in the past. I don't know why. I don't know what it's attributed to. Maybe the economy is coming back a little bit. I don't know. But we've just had several, and every time we have one of those SWAT callouts, and there was a period in February, I think we had six out of a nine-day period. Every time we have one, you're talking 10 to 12 SWAT officers. Depending on the circumstance, you could include negotiators. You've got a variety of staff members out there that may or may not impact overtime. You've got patrol officers we're using for scene security. When the situation is over, you usually got detectives, you've got crime scene people. So they are, plus a variety of specialty units, so they are just, they are large overtime expenditures.
So what you're saying is if you hired an additional officer, still not recovered that because they're all in different departments and doing different things?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
In addition, there's a few other things. I mean, we've got a records unit that hasn't been expanded many, many years. We're paying 20 hours of overtime every two weeks just to keep up with what they're doing. Hopefully, that's something that's being addressed. We've got our property and evidence purge team. We're paying overtime for that team to go in and purge some evidence. Hopefully, that's going to be a short duration, and we can move on from that. We had some employees over the vacation cap. We paid a little bit of overtime to get them under that cap. And we talked about at the budget presentation, our community events. We have a hard time saying no. And, you know, we had about 50 or so events this year, just this past weekend.
Well, this weekend alone.
We had Sky Kids. We had, Hanover's had a safety fair. We had Little League opening day. We had a canine trial. So, you know, there may be a time we have to talk about that and see if we need to put our foot down. But, and just general staffing, you know, we've got sergeants, we don't have a corporal rank or an assistant squad leader, so anytime a sergeant is off, we have to pay overtime for another sergeant to fill in. And again, just general staffing needs where we've had to pay some overtime. So with all those things combined, and like I said, I think we've, we're going to be able to solve some of those things, and they won't be reoccurring every year, but that's what the big overtime expenditure is.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate the explanation.
Bill?
Chief, so far this year, how have you been able to accomplish it to date? Because all these things happen in this current budget year, so.
They are, and, you know, so far, we've been okay. But if we continue to trend for the rest of the year as we're going, we will be over that budget, so that's part of the supplemental.
Okay. Can I continue?
You go ahead.
If the, I don't have any reason to doubt that you're not being as efficient as you possibly can. However, last week, we heard that the city manager and the deputy city managers are going to be undertaking an overtime analysis of public safety. And I would hate for us to commit funds into the base until that analysis has been done. So perhaps what I'd like to suggest, however you guys work it out, is that that money sits in the city manager's office until such time as they get through that, and as the chief needs it, he can go to the manager and get it rather than inflating the base budget.
Councilmember Stip, we've had this discussion during the budget supplemental process, and this money has been recommended in the budget as a one-time item for that exact reason. And so it is not part of the ongoing base. We are experiencing some over, areas in overtime over budget this year. They have been able to reprioritize some of the less, the less important items within their budget. So we may have to reallocate some base budget funds to this for the year, but that was the intent for next year's one-time money.
Did you have a question, Joe?
No, I was just saying, you know, to follow up on Councilmember Stip, it's listed as one-time, so if any time, you know, something comes in there, it's not, it's not going to get lost in the base because they'd have to justify it the following year in there, so.
Molly?
Okay. Well, I appreciate your explanation, Chief, and I do, I am concerned about the trend that we may be going on. And I'd rather have some money set aside than have you come back in front of us and say, we've got to have overtime because we're already out of our budget. So as long as this is just one-time money, right?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Now, is there any way of tracking, you said, limit the things we're going to accept for the rest of the time? You know, do we need, do we need to put a little control number on this from council suggestion side of what they want to see happen? And also from citizens, do we want to monitor this, I mean, and be proactive on this, city manager?
Yes, actually, the deputy city manager, and I talked about it earlier, and I think Police Chief can respond to that as far as what they're doing.
Yeah, Mayor, actually, we've already, we've been proactive. We've already had a couple of meetings with the deputy city manager just for that reason. We've outlined all of these special events we do throughout the year. We're prioritizing them. And, you know, we're going to look at them very closely as to something we really should continue, something that would be a priority of council and city management, and then other things that, and that's where we have to make those decisions.
So it's good for me as the mayor just to sort of put the word out one more time to councilists. When a good citizen comes up and says to you, hey, I really want you to do this, we're so close to saying, oh, of course, we can try to make that arrangement. Let's explain to them that there is certain funds that it takes to do this, and they're in kind, but this still, the city has to pay the people. And so that maybe we could not respond to them in a positive tone until we brought it back to the city manager, and he can take it to the chief, and we can look at it. Is that kind of everybody?
Molly, did you have something?
Yes, Chief, I have been in conversation with several organizations who would like to have the police do certain things for them. And I remind them that, and they tell me, oh, the officers are donating their time. Now, I find that very hard to believe, and I remind them that while they may be donating their time, we may be paying overtime. And if they're not being paid overtime, we're taking them away from other duties that may be more important. And while it's okay to ask once in a while, I don't think we need to be doing it every month, every six months or what, because there's so many folks that would love to have us block the streets and, and, you know, I'm on the block watch, and we're always asking to block a street or, you know, shut down a roadway. And I just appreciate you really monitoring that, and I really think we need to take a look at it. Or not necessarily us, but you've got to say no sometimes.
Thank you.
Joanne?
Sorry, Sheri, you had your hand up.
I'm sorry. Sheri?
And I appreciate how you are basically juggling, and I guess that's one of my concerns, when you said that, you know, we are a very safe city, but we have had several incidences, and we're calling people out. Is that something that over the next year, we're going to look at too, if we need more people as we grow? Is that something that's going to be looked at?
Councilmember Lortano, absolutely. I think that's always a part of what we do throughout the year. We're always planning and looking at that down the road for, into the future. And I think some of these larger incidents that we have, that's going to be part of what we're looking at too. Is that just, you know, a sign of the times, and that's just the way it's going to be and the trend? Or is this just a fluke, and we've had a bunch, and they're going to drop off again, so.
Okay, yeah, because that's my concern, that you shouldn't have to be juggling that much, because when those instances like happen up in Estrella, we're so far out there to get those extra manpower up there, you know, and you've only got six people to cover the city. And that doesn't seem like a lot to me, you know, so that is a concern. I know you're doing a great job, and you're keeping it a safe city, but as we grow, that is one concern. And I do have a question. The records analyst, is that a position that was open that's going to be filled? Or, and the property and evidence custodian, are those positions that were open that were going to be filled, or are those new positions? I know you need them. I'm just not sure what they are.
There are new positions to those, and it's coming from other places.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wasn't sure where they were there. So that's going to help out with that 20 hours for that one overtime.
Yes, and if I may just add to that, Councilmember Lortano, we do have a slide later that shows the six positions that are being repurposed for some of these new positions. So net gain of zero, but there is repurposing going on, and Terry will be covering that in a little bit. Thank you.
I just wanted to add, I appreciate the overtime analysis that will be coming. I think that will really give us a good picture. How much are events? How much is records analyst? But I would like to just make sure that the ballpark overtime is part of that analysis so we don't confuse some of those hours with other things.
Joe?
It's my understanding, and we had talked about this before, but that overtime should be getting transferred over into that fund at the end of the period. Is it still happening that way?
Yes, Councilman Pizzillo, we do that entry about in April every year.
Okay, so it's a way of us tracking, okay.
I just got to say. Bill?
Okay, I have a different public safety question, so thank you, Chief. It's, I'm assuming that the emergency services agreement money that's in here is for the regional communications.
The emergency services agreement is what we pay to Phoenix every year.
I'm just assuming it's just an increased cost from that.
Call volume increase, correct.
Okay.
And then a couple of the other items, the 911 center is scheduled to be open this year, so there's some operating costs for that, as well as an increase in medical supplies. You'll see a number of the little dollar signs of fiscal responsibility. We are starting to invest in some of the depleting resources that we had before, over the, during the recession. Number of supplements for equipment and replacement of supplies. Are there any other questions on the public safety?
I have one more. Sorry, I think this is probably for the chief again. For the increased booking fees, I know that's out of your control with Maricopa County. Sorry. Sorry for the musical chairs. I apologize, but I know that's totally out of your control. It's Maricopa County where you book them into. But if someone is held like on those homicides, who pays the bill until they go to trial? Who flips that bill?
If they stay in the same facility and they're not transferred, they're not bonded out, we would pay that bill.
So just for example, if the trial is two to three years out, we are paying the housing costs for a two to three-year. And obviously, the homicide, they're not going to get bonded out, but so that we have to keep in mind that that's going to be part of our budget when we have these big incidents.
What I don't, I don't know about that. I will get you the answer. I don't know if they can stay in that facility for more than a year. So they may end up being transferred somewhere else, which we don't pay then. So there may be a year cap on being in that facility. So I'll find you the answer.
I was just curious, because we had some pretty long ones, and I know it takes a while to get them to trial.
It does.
That's all I have, sorry.
Okay, with that, I'll move to development services area. Within this is development services and engineering, and again, to remind you, we've heard about the base budget presentations a few weeks ago. Some key initiatives here. Brian touched on a few, the license plate study. We also are doing a marketing and strategic economic development plan. There is a second year of the general plan update will be included in this budget as one-time. Within the engineering department, we also have the HERF budget, which I'll talk about next week, but there were some one-time needs to, again, restore some of their equipment there. And then the pavement preservation program has been increased. Are there any questions on the development services?
Molly?
Thank you. I have a question on the building safety temporary inspector existing. Is it, we have the position, and we're going to fund it, and we have somebody, or is somebody there and we're going to open it up?
Councilwoman Campbell, we, oh, do you want it, Sheri, go ahead.
Mayor, councilmember, so as you will recall, we do have a temporary inspector in place today who was helping us get up to speed and reduce overtime with our existing workload. That would be a continuation of that appointment there, so it's a temporary full-time inspector.
Okay, thank you. Joanne?
Two questions, just, I guess, maybe curiosity's sake. But what, it says ongoing costs, the retrofit illuminated street name signs? Okay, I'm sorry. Well, you know what, the other one, oh, where'd it go? Oh, I think it had to do with credit card service fees, $26,000. I think that was under your department.
It is. Mayor, councilmember, sir, Vice Mayor rather, it's kind of an interesting discussion. So we had capped our credit card limit for paying of fees at a very low number, around $500. We had gone down to even $1,000, and that was because we had several clients during the really boom years pay their development fees, and the city then lost the benefit of that entire fee payment to the fees of the credit card company. And now that we are continuing to see an increase in fee revenue, and we anticipate that we will into the future exponentially, we've decided that in the benefit of receiving immediate payment of fees on a credit card basis outweighs that small cost that we're seeing on the credit card fees today. And so it's, in other words, it's an ongoing cost that reimburses itself with the payment of fees. And so Financial Services has directed us that we are, we are good to go, so to speak, in terms of taking credit card payments in larger amounts now to cover those fees.
And it sort of balances it out with the other cities that are redoing all of their, trying to be better serviced.
Thank you, Mayor. That's another point as well. It's been very, very challenging when we have large corporations that are doing business in Goodyear that may have to go back to a corporate office and get, you know, a check for an exact dollar amount each time that they wish to do a transaction with us. And if that dollar amount doesn't match exactly, then plans get held up for weeks at a time in some cases, and so it's also a customer service element.
And there was an article just this, yesterday, I think it was, or today's paper about Phoenix and all the services doing their, and their development services. And it's a great goal to meet someday of all the items that they're doing and making it very, you know, service-oriented, I guess is the best way to put it.
Joanne?
So knowing what happened in the past, I mean, we had somebody pay a million dollars on a credit card, and that, that's a big hit. What, in the future, and I think, I don't remember, did we do it to our citizens that if they use their credit card to pay for a program, a class, that they had to pay a 2% convenience fee? I forget if we did that or not, or somebody's done that. It may not have been us, but I know somebody's done that.
On the fee, we did not pass that cost through. We are not allowed to under our credit card agreements. The safety that we have in place that was different when the transaction that we all remember was, we were accepting credit card fees on development impact fees. And we could not charge that to the development impact fee fund that we had to pick it up. We are not going to be charging on development impact fees this time, so that's the savings of those big dollars that you recall. That's where the numbers would get up to a million dollars.
Well, I mean, somebody paid a million dollars, and so that cost us 2.5%.
Correct.
You know, as a deficit to us, so that's okay.
But it got to a million dollars because of development impact fees. But it got to a million dollars because of development impact fees.
I want to see what you're saying.
The actual, the actual cost for city services on that one might have been 100,000, a lot lower. They were not that million dollars.
Gotcha. If they just pay cash.
And Vice Mayor, we actually changed this policy about a month or so ago and brought the development community in to discuss it during our quarterly review meetings, and they were very excited. And so we posted that change at the development services counter, and we are actually doing that today, and we've noticed a big improvement.
I appreciate the convenience of it. I mean, we want to be that. I just don't want, didn't want to see us get, you know, hit with those kind of numbers again.
And we'll be watching, certainly.
Any other questions? All right, let's proceed.
Engineering. I had the engineering question.
She had her engineering.
Just, what is it? David, the retrofit illuminated street name signs?
Yes, what that supplemental is for is, on the traffic signals that we have around the city, we have street names, illuminated street names panels on those signals. As they burn out, we want to begin the process of replacing the fluorescent lighting fixtures with LED.
Gotcha. Oh.
They'll last longer and the electric usage is about 50% of the cost.
Thank you.
Bill?
David, while you're sitting there. The million-dollar payment preservation, is that, is that in addition to what we would have normally in the CIP? Or is that the plan? Is this what we do every year? Because we're seeing it in a different format this year.
Yes, Mayor and Councilmember Stip, that would be in addition to what we have in this year's budget.
Okay, so this is additional? Okay.
Yes.
Outstanding. Then the second question that I had was the traffic signal management software, is that an upgrade to our current software that we identified a couple of weeks ago?
It's actually, it's actually a replacement of our existing software.
Even better.
Our existing software is no longer supported by the vendor. So when it, when we cannot fix it ourselves and it's basically not usable.
No, even better. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, moving ahead to general government. This does include a number of divisions and departments, city manager, mayor and council, city clerk, city attorney, and the municipal court. I'd like to point out here that in the mayor and, or the city manager's budget, we did have a change, a restructure here, and the staff support is now listed in the city manager's budget. Also, the communication services have been part of the city manager's budget, and we have a reallocated position, which we'll talk about later, reprioritize that position. With that, I think someone had noticed about, noted about the conference attendance, and so there is a supplemental in to cover that within the council budget. Also, increase for communication services or a number of supplementals that you'll see for improved website services, which I think we've heard about before too. And some consulting fees.
Jen, questions?
I wanted to ask about the fees on the website for that. I see the consultant would be $30,000 and then a web developer $100,000. And I think at one of our last work sessions, we had talked about, what about bringing in a student from ASU or a student to maybe help with some of that? To me, it just seems high, but I'm wondering how we got at that number.
Is that, Ramina coming to the?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay, so the $30,000 placeholder is, it's part of the redesign process. We're looking at redesigning the entire website, not just updating what we currently have. And so if we go down that path, the $30,000 is there in the event that we need to bring in a web consultant to help us in that redesign process. That doesn't necessarily mean we're going to use it, but it's just there so that in this process over the next 12 months, where we're doing an analysis with the IT department, it's a placeholder in the event we need an outside person to come in and help us with that. If we bring in somebody from ASU, it would be to help us currently with what we're doing right now, but it would not be for a new, completely new updated website.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, Bill?
Stay there. Lobbyist.
Yeah.
That's a new number, and it's an ongoing cost.
Yes, the consulting and lobbying fees has been there for the past five years. This is the same we've always paid. In the past, it wasn't budgeted, it was as needed. And so this time, we're actually putting it into the budget, so we don't have a situation where it's as needed and we have to pull it last minute. So we, those numbers are derived off of the contracts either we've currently paid with a little bit in there in case we need it now. Our federal contract is no longer there. We did cancel that, and then we moved that over to do other things with. So that's going to, again, it's not something we have to use, but this time, we're budgeting for it in the event we have to use it. We haven't done that in the past.
Okay, so this is 70,000 for a federal lobbyist if we need it?
If we need it, yes. And the state is about 35 to 40, depending on the issue. That's usually what we've paid in the past. So again, that's what's budgeted, and that's again, if we need it.
Is that figure in this 70, or is that elsewhere in the budget?
It's, well, currently the 30 is, we already have a contract right now that we're, that's a part of that. And so the 70 is for the federal. We already have money in the regular for the state, so that's ongoing.
Okay. Okay.
Joe?
The professional conferences for mayor and council, was that in a variety of different locations, and now they're consolidating? Can you kind of tell me how that came up with that number?
Yeah, I think the way that that comes up is, that's exactly what it was. In addition, we had not ever budgeted for, for instance, all seven council members possibly going to every single NLC or US Conference of Mayor or the Arizona League. Again, that was something that wasn't budgeted in the past. Most of the council members now are on committees at NLC, and the mayor is serving on committees on US Conference. So this time, we budgeted for, in the event, all seven council members go to every single one. We had not done that in the past either. So that's again, reflecting what the requirements are, what we've been doing in the past year.
So this accounts for every council member?
Yes.
Jen?
I might be hitting a touchy subject here, but concerning when mayor and council and when we do attend these meetings, has there ever been in the past a requirement or anything that when you come back, that you bring back the information with you that you learned at these conferences? Something that says to the taxpayer, yes, I spent your money, but here's what I learned from this, and this is what we're doing as a city? Has there anything been like that in the past? Has it ever, has it ever been considered? I guess just as a taxpayer, I've always thought, okay, we're, you know, we're spending quite a bit of money to, you know, for these trips. What am I getting out of it as a taxpayer?
I don't think that there's anything that's required, although most council members, actually every single one of them do come back and they bring their pamphlets back. They've sit, they, most of them have sat down with me or the city manager to review the things that they've learned in the workshops. There's presentations that they provide. We've used a lot of those items that come out of those committees to address different things that we've done, even just in the budgeting process, or for instance, performance measures, or anything that you can think of, fire server, emergency prepare. There's so much information that comes from there. We do get it back as staff and we do put it forward, but it was, it's never been a requirement. But I venture to say every single council member's brought something back at one point or another that's been of interest to us or applies to what we're doing right now.
Okay, thank you. Joanne?
Well, and I totally understand Jen's question. I mean, actually, I would say that this is the most anybody has used for travel expenses in the last probably four years. And in fact, this year is my first trip to DC. But I believe that, you know, it's the takeaways and we do state them. I mean, actually, the situation I just was asking about with our reserve funds, that was a takeaway from one of the conferences that we were at. And it was like, okay, it's nice to hear when our city's doing the best practices, but when there's other best practices out there and you hear from these so-called experts, you want to ask your city manager, okay, why is it that we are different? And so, you know, I agree with you. What is it that we are taking back, you know? And what is it that we're sharing with the nation? You know, that Goodyear can share? So I totally respect that question, Jen.
Any other comments? Joe?
Refresh me on the AV. What is that AV equipment? That 81?
Yes. So currently, what we're doing is, Laney is going through an AV assessment with a consultant that we've brought on. And it's going to look at exactly everything that's in this room, everything from our microphones to the overheads, to streamlining online, looking at all of our actual equipment. And so what we did was, we put in a placeholder as they go through this assessment. The assessment should be done in about 30 to 45 days. They're looking at every single one of our technological items that we've got back there. So in the event they come back with the assessment and they say, look, you guys, it's really great that you've been operating on this, but you can't operate on this stuff anymore if you want these end results. This is a placeholder to start purchasing that equipment that needs us to get upgraded, including and possibly connecting at some point within the next year or two into a Channel 11. So this is just a placeholder for that equipment. We don't have an exact number yet because the assessment's taking place right now.
Sherri?
I'm back on the website. I'm very excited that you have the, you know, that we're going to look at that because it, you've sat here and heard us say how horrendous it is. Is that something that, and this was, I'm tying in two together, this is something we learned at one of the conferences, that, you know, the council members can have a page or a section on the website that we can update or we can work with staff to update? Because you've got different people going to different meetings. And like when I go to the DV meetings, I can tell people here, but I don't really have a way, because we only do the council corner every so many, you know, months. By the time there, I've kind of moved, that issue's not, you know, current anymore. It's not current anymore. So as part of the website, when we have the designers, and I know this is a little off track, is that something we can do that we can get our messages across, what we're doing and what these committees are doing to people?
Yes, the whole idea behind the website is, well, communications is partnering with IT, and we're going to develop a needs analysis, and that needs analysis is actually going from department to department, including mayor and council. And it will go into, what is it that you're looking for? What are those tools that you would like? What are the applications? Everything from mobile applications to what kind of pages are you looking at having? What kind of services do you want to provide to the residents online? All those things require vendors and outside services that we currently don't have in our IT department. So that needs analysis will determine those types of things.
Part of this.
That's part of the, that'll be part of the ongoing assessment with IT that they're kicking off right now. And then if we find out, say, three quarters of the way or halfway through, look, this is a lot, we really do need to bring somebody in, because IT is also going through their enterprise replacement. So we want to make sure that we have the ability to be, do both at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Joe?
The only thing I ask is, I know how this works from a budget standpoint. You put placeholders in, obviously, because you don't know what the cost is. Alls I ask is, and again, I don't know what the number is, but if the number comes in at 41, that we spend the 41 and we don't take the 40 and transfer it somewhere else? Because you have the authority to do that. So if we're budgeting 81 as a placeholder and it comes in for less, then we don't take the money and use it for something else.
You don't want to make a fast, hard rule on that, though. You want to be able to have that, that.
Well, if we're place.
Flexibility that the manager can come forth and.
We can always ask to move it somewhere, that's.
And state that, but to cross the board, I would hate to see that, because that will give you some flexibility on some of the items that, I mean, we are a growing city that are trying to catch up from things we should have done a few years ago. So I'm, I'm not saying that we shouldn't keep track of the money, know exactly what it went on and so forth, but city manager has the ability, I believe.
He does.
By the charter. And I don't want you and me to manage him. We hired him, and we hired him for these, to manage. Now, if you want information, I'm not against that. And, you know, bring it right up here so the world hears it. But I don't, you're getting into, me, in my view, you're micromanaging here and you're getting into the weeds. And I won't say just you, I'll say all of us, because we're all guilty of this. So I'm just questioning, is that doing that, Joe?
Respectfully, Mayor, my problem is, is you can put a placeholder for anything, and if we said 200,000 and it comes in at 50, it's a way of creating another additional 150. Now, if you come back and let us know that, I don't want placeholders that are, that we haven't got a study or any idea what we're spending on, coming in an amount and then coming in at half. And again, it may not, it may come in at 90, as far as I know. And they may even make it more.
We're going to, I'm going to say something again, this is not an argument, okay? This is just bringing up. You did the word "study," okay? We can't afford as a city to do a study on every event we do here, in every direction we go in. They're very costly. So be careful when you use the word "study." But I totally agree with you, if you want acknowledgement of, down to the dime of when we've committed something to IT, that we should have a report that says, okay, this is what it was, this is the money. And then you can, he can, they can always come back, Joe, if it's edgy, and you just chime in here in a minute and say, hey, listen, this is what it costs us, we have this amount of money left. And then we can be informed on that. Is, am I in, am I going the wrong direction here? I just.
Mayor and Councilmember Pizzillo, you know, it's a good point. We take our best estimates, and it's based on what we're talking to other cities, what they've gone through to come up with our estimates. Prime examples like the phone system replacement came in at $1.5 million estimated, and we brought it in at what, $1.2 million? That $300,000 savings, we don't then go out and spend that elsewhere. What happens at the end of the budget year? From those expenditure savings, it actually then becomes the one-time money for next year. We're not expensing it. So, but there needs to be the accountability that we talked about. Council absolutely needs to make sure that you know what that project cost us. If there are savings, that's terrific, and we then get to use them elsewhere, and most of that converts to the end of the year in terms of the fund balance.
So does that satisfy you, that you're saying accountability then?
Yeah, what he just said says.
That's without passing some.
No, no, I'm not asking passing, but he knows where I'm coming from as far as, because we don't know what this is going to cost. But in the same token, you have to have something from a budget, because with budget, you can't spend more than your budget.
But am I on the, under this, just a minute, Bill. I don't usually get in like this, but on the assumption that when you decide to do some of these things, that you are calling around and getting some kind of general, you're not just saying, oh, let's see, I guess that's going to be 30 million, we'll just pop that number in. I'm assuming you're looking at figures somewhere.
Yes, I mean, for every one of these figures, it's either pulled from previous, what we've done, like for instance, for the consulting, it's previously what we've paid. For the AV, it's, we've looked at the different prices for pieces of technology that we think we know we're going to need in the next 12 months regardless of the outcome. It's rather, how far do we want to go in the AV system? And that'll be something that we bring back is, you know, to management, look, we can do these next steps, it'll cost this much, but if we want to go further than that, here's what it would cost. So we've got some idea that we've looked at others. We've had other cities look at our AV system to tell us what it could possibly cost. So those numbers are coming from conversations and/or actual research before we've done it.
Is that reassuring?
Reassuring was, he told me.
Okay, good.
Bill?
Thank you.
You mean, you're not using a giant dartboard? I'm wondering if the quarterly expenditure transfer process that we go through, you know, this is the only time we see these numbers. And I'm wondering if there's a way to up, make that part of that update, to keep the council informed periodically throughout the year? As opposed to, you know, if we do, we did placeholders all year long and decided one-time monies, and I think this is where Councilman Pizzillo's going at. If we, just collectively, and this figure for one-time is four-point-two million dollars. So, if we have four-point-two million dollars of our best guess, or an educated guess, and it comes in at two-point-eight, that's a lot of money that we tied up perhaps unnecessarily. And I'm, and I know the manager gets that and that's some part of what they look at. But for the rest of us who don't see that all the time, I don't know if that would be helpful and I don't know if that would be unburdened on finance to report those kinds of things. I just kind of throw it out there, I don't necessarily need an answer, but.
Councilmember Stipp and members of the council, we actually have this discussion all year long and we follow up on the one-time and ongoing through the quarterly meetings. I will remind you that when we came back with the department discussions, the things, the items that they discussed with you were their one-time and their supplemental requests, so you did get a status report on that. We would be happy to add a financial supplemental summary status report to the quarterly, too. We can do that. Because we are tracking that information.
Yeah, I personally have no doubt that you're tracking it and, and, but, and if you look, take the table and divide it here, you guys know it, we don't. And I think that's kind of.
We could add a report.
Solves the problem, just an update.
Good idea. Joanne?
Well, and I think that it's been more reassuring this last year of seeing some of the reports that we've had for the departments. Because takeaway from one of those conferences was that other cities have had issues where their departments, you know, pad their budgets. And at the end of the year, you know, you held that money for that, that department and they didn't spend all their money. And it was like, well, that was, you know, half a million dollars that could have been for something else. And so, I really appreciate the way that this last year, we've had more of those reports showing that, you know, this isn't occurring. And so, I think that's the reassuring, reassurance that I think Bill also was asking, if we can see some of those, those figures in the quarters, you know, that will help, too.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
And if there are no other questions on general government, I'll move to support services. This includes all of the departments that generally support the rest of the city, such as IT, finance, human resources. We do include Public Works, Administration, Small Division, and Facilities in this. You'll see here, there are a number of supplements, again, these are, a lot of them are catch-up and replacement items to get some things stocked up. The website improvements listed here are the technology part of that. If you have any questions on, on any of these supplementals?
Yes. Bill?
The hardware replacement for IT, I assume, is the, mine and Councilman Pizzillo's favorite subject? Is that, I mean, a simple yes is.
Councilmember Stipp, this is in addition to, we have budgeted over the last four years since I've been here, about three-hundred thousand each year to go toward the reserve. This is an increase to that amount. It's my understanding that this year, they are going to replace a number of the hardware items, it's eight-hundred thousand. Dan here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I wasn't talking, I was actually getting excited that this was the HDE replacement.
Welcome, Dan.
Hello, Mayor and Council. The hardware replacement is the fund that we talked about last week where we replace aging equipment. And so, we made a number of large purchases about five years ago and all that gear is due for replacement this cycle. And so, that's why there's such a large increase year over year.
So, no, it's not your favorite thing, Bill?
But Councilmember Stipp, I do know that next week, we will be, we will be addressing that in the capital improvement plan.
All right.
Any other questions for Dan while he's up here? Sherri?
I just have a question. How do you decide, I mean.
What's aging?
Well, everything's aged, you buy it, it's outdated. But with all the changes right now in technology, even Microsoft's is not compatible with what they have, how do you decide or how do you plan for that so our citizens know that they're getting the best bang for their buck? Because now Microsoft has a touchscreen, but it doesn't, compatible with Windows Seven. What do you do?
There's a question for us.
Yes, thank you. There, we have a set of rules that we use on how we look at aging hardware. So, for PCs, we say five years is a pretty good life cycle and we try to get those assets out. Some equipment that's either network, storage, or servers, those things can have a little bit longer lifecycle. So, we have some different rules that we have for each of those devices. Software is different. That, as you're talking about, you know, incompatible with the newest, latest operating system and old hardware, that's really not a part of this. We do try to keep current with the Microsoft operating systems and we have a plan to do that this year, getting to, to the latest versions. But that won't impact this replacement hardware.
Thank you. Anything else?
Mayor, council, I'll just add, there's a number of the one-time items that we fund every year that do have very detailed replacement schedules, including the fleet replacement and the IT. And so, we've taken an inventory of everything we have within those funds and it, and it rotates out. And so, then there's criteria, Mark Flynn has different criteria for the rolling stock and then for the IT equipment, it's, you know, they're managing the inventory that we have.
Joe?
On the replacement fund as a whole, because you, as you had mentioned, there's a schedule on, you know, replacing that, probably tied into depreciation, et cetera. Where are we at percent-wise as far as funding right now, would you say?
Councilmember Pizzillo, the on-thefleet replacement, due to the fact that we did do the, the large public safety purchases, we are falling a little bit behind. We were about eighty percent, I think that's a little bit lower now. We're probably in a year, you know, we try to level that off, but we've just been committing one-time, one-point-two money and we did have a spike over the last couple of years. So, that percentage is falling a little lower.
Are we planning on address that, hopefully maybe next year?
I have addressed that in the forecast to go ahead and put some one-time money into that because we are going to need a higher investment in there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Bill?
No, I have another question for Public Works.
Thank you, Dan.
I didn't hear what he had a question, what is your question?
Public Works.
Oh, Public Works, okay.
Who could that be?
Well, it's the facilities improvement, under Building Services, page three. Mr. Flynn.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Go ahead, Bill.
Facilities improvement, forty-eight thousand, that's all it says. Do we know, do we know what that is?
Actually, I'm not sure I do, no. You're talking about supplemental requests, if I may?
This is the supplemental request to address the front entrance at City Hall.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, is that what that is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize for the terminology there. A shade awning, a structure at the front entry to delineate the main entry to the building, increase its visibility and then provide some, some shade and central designation to the main entry.
And this is what we found out, forty-eight thousand is not enough.
We've had some preliminary designs done and I think the cost is seventy to, as much as ninety-five, maybe a hundred thousand dollars because there's structural elements as part of that. Is that correct?
It is, right. We've, we've worked cooperatively with engineering and gone out into the marketplace and done a little bit of vetting with some contractors. And the issue is whether or not the structure of the building would be sufficient to support the structure that was designed. And that will drive how much structural steel is necessary in order to support what the final decision is.
And, and I have to say, this is one of the things that I talked about with the city manager, since we're not going to be building the city hall from quite some time to update the front of the building.
I did, too.
And I've had the complaints over and over again, it doesn't even say City Hall.
People can't find it.
People wander around the parking lot looking for the city hall. So, same way on the street side, nobody knows if this is the city hall. So, I've had people say that to me and we have a number now that we're, we're growing and we have a lot of very distinguished people and visiting the building and our regular citizens like to know where they're going to. So, I felt there was a great need to just dress up that front and so that's how this initiated, so.
Is, is that the type of thing that we can use the council?
Initiative money?
Initiative money for? Marketing, which is essential, what this is, our city and our building?
I'm going to put that to the city manager.
Councilmember Stipp, it is, we have allocated one-time dollars for, obviously, we have forty-eight thousand dollars in there right now. And it is something that we normally would not ask council to use your discretionary on because we, it would be part of the, the budget process. The, the council discretionary can be used for, instead of facility improvements per se, for initiatives that may come up throughout the year that aren't really factored into the budget right now.
Neighborhood things.
It could be neighborhoods, it could be any number of things. It could be, you know, one year we did the speed cushions, things that come up mid-budget year that are unplanned and council says, you know, the direction is that this is a good place to spend those dollars. So, instead of doing it upfront, we would ask that you probably hold on to that.
Joe?
Just as a follow-up, what you had mentioned, just this building itself is the same thing. When you drive past this building, there's no marquee or nothing that says, "There's a university here or a library here or a court here or we meet here." So, yeah, I mean, it would be kind of nice to, just as a follow-up, you mentioned for City Hall, it would be nice to address it in this building, too, as well, especially when the library gets built, you know, and you have a university now, so people know that it's here.
We have a probably trade-off here.
That wasn't part of the purchase, being in there, I remember we had that discussion.
We talked about that, but I'm not.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the, the idea that had, that had kind of spun off of the main entry at City Hall, we worked cooperatively again with engineering, to look at the design with the graphic designer, to come up with a theme that might be used across city facilities. So, we could incorporate the things that would delineate City Hall, we could apply that to other buildings as well. Be that with the, the size and sca, type of font that's utilized or perhaps the color scheme that's utilized. The Veneta complex does have a couple of marquee components. But again, as we look towards advancing this idea on behalf of the entire city, we didn't necessarily just toss up the, the name of the University Franklin Pierce or, or the Cancer Treatment Center group that's there. Franklin Pierce has expressed a little bit of interest in delineating their building specifically. Cancer Treatment Center does have some logo at their, at their main entry to the building, but we're looking to formalize that as well as part of a, kind of a larger effort on behalf of the city. Regis Reed has been the fellow we've been coordinating with from the engineering group and, and the capital project side.
Sherri?
And just so when the public hears this, awning, we're not talking like a tent awning, we're, we're, well, that's what people think about awning, you're going to spend that, you're talking like a permanent structure.
The, the graphic designer had come up with a component that would provide for some shading at the entry, the potential to back, backlight that so that City of Goodyear's moniker was, was able to be clearly defined even in the evening hours after dark. But it would be a permanent structure added to the, to the, the face of the building. If you kind of envision the way the north and the west wing come together at that, that center point with the little arch at the center, this would wrap around that entire component and essentially be a delineator to draw folks into the main entry.
Yeah, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Thank you very much.
And moving ahead to parks and recreation, there are a number, again, of equipment replacements here, some park improvements, replace some amenities, fountains, benches, things like that. There also is some equipment, I believe, in here for the stadium, which again is funded from general fund, anything that's up and over the operations budget. Are there any questions specifically on the park improvements?
Joe?
On the ballpark improvement, that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, is that coming from the ballpark fund? I mean, it's, it's a fund that gets built up on a regular basis, so they're tapping that, that fund as opposed to any general fund transfers over to that, that fund?
Councilmember Pizzillo, is Nathan going to, Nathan, you want to talk about the difference?
Yeah, I had the same question.
I did, too.
Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand supplemental is for our rolling fleet equipment and that would not be covered under the current funded depreciation that's in place right now for building and structures.
Okay. So, that, just for clarification, that's the money that you put aside as part of the ticket price that goes into a fund that you draw off of, is that, is that correct?
This would be apart from those dollars, the, the funded depreciation amount that's funded each year that you're referring to.
Right.
Is for buildings and for major structures. This supplemental request is for our rolling fleet, which is not included, wouldn't be covered under the funded depreciation that you're referring to.
So, that'll be an additional two-fifty transfer of the general fund in to cover?
Correct.
Councilmember Pizzillo, it is part of the one-time funding?
Okay, I'm, I just, I want to just clarify, because I know they had a fund that they, that's part of the ticket price that helps fund some of those improvements, but this is an additional general fund subsidy that goes to cover this?
That's correct.
Wally?
Can you tell me, please, what a rolling fleet is? Is it the people that roll the ballpark or is it something else?
Very close, Mayor, Councilwoman. The rolling fleet, I'm referring to our mowers and our, you know, our, things with wheels that our staff uses to, to field prep and maintain the fields.
It's his raptor that he's got out there. Well, oh, I'm sorry, you want to?
Yes, may, may I ask another question then? If there, if it is your mowers and that sort of thing, your mowers and rollers and whatever, and Parks and Rec is in charge of our landscaping for the city, why isn't some of the money somewhere that it doesn't come out of our general fund perhaps for that, for the replacement of those mowers? Isn't there someplace else we can get that money from? I mean, I, I know we're, we'd love to have every expense of the ballpark paid for by the ballpark, but we know that's not feasible. But am I missing something?
The, the fleet itself that we're referring to is dedicated to, to the ballpark. The Parks has entirely their own fleet. We do share from time to time when those opportunities exist. However, a lot of the equipment is used simultaneously throughout the day. So, we're unable to do that in most cases.
And essentially, eventually, it'll be self-sustaining, the entire Goodyear Park, right? Isn't that part of the process?
Mayor, that's our goal.
Yes, okay. And so, consequently, we continue to keep those under there. Joanne, are you next or Bill?
The other, the only question while, while you're sitting there was the, I assume the park equipment replacement is for the same types of park equipment?
You're exactly correct, mowers and riding equipment for, for our staff.
Joanne?
No, I'm just excited to see that we are having some one-time funds to be able to take care of some of these park issues. And yes, I did have that same question. Whenever I see ballpark and general fund on the same page, I just, you know, I want it over there, just keep it over there. And I know we still have to transfer money to it, but you know, I just.
Getting there, we're getting there.
I just hate seeing it there. But, and I'm, I'm very happy about finally getting some of those, those trees and plants and you know what, I think that you, you hit it well. That's the only thing that I think has all three of the symbols actually on it. So, that's, that's good, thank you.
Great.
Joe?
I guess probably the next thirty days or so, we'll have an overview of total recap of the ballpark, operating revenue, expenses, transfers in for our operations, that type of thing.
Correct. We are in the process now of, of going through the settlement and audits.
Okay.
So, normally that takes us through mid to late May to get all those reports completed and settled out. So, late May, early June, we'll have a complete report for you.
Sixty days, okay.
Bill, did you have a question?
No, I was thinking.
Oh, okay. See, I'm getting really astute here, I can catch you in your thinking process.
Smoke, gets the smoke coming out.
Is there any other questions for Nathan? Nathan, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to take a minute to thank the directors because I know, I know this is hard, I put together the numbers and we have a number of sessions, but I will not pretend to be an expert in their field. So, thank you for coming up and with your explanations and helping out tonight. With that, I'm going to go ahead and kind of move it a little bit high level here, again, the budget initiatives, if you will. And I'm going to say, I did go ahead and round these numbers and keep them pretty high. They are subject to change and we will be bringing back the total balanced draft budget to you the first meeting in May. And so, the ongoing, as you saw, the supplementals are about two-point-one million. There is one, one-time funding of four-point-two and then the reserve funding, which again includes the IT replacement fleet and risk management reserves. The other thing I'd like to add here is that there's some other subsequent discussions that are going to happen. As you see, we've not included everything in here. Dean, as patient as he is, will be coming up and discussing the employee benefits, specifically the health insurance, health dental, those compensation packages. And then, Winat, the deputy city manager, will be coming back, I think it's tentatively scheduled for the draft budget presentation and she'll be talking about the, the sworn pay packages and then the, hopefully the final union negotiations. We also have included in here, as we balanced out the budget, and we're putting, again, we're still calculating all this and putting it together, but there is a pay increase for the non-sworn employee group and it averages right around two-point-five percent. So, again, when we bring this back for the draft budget, all of this will be included. Tonight, we're specifically talking about the, the supplementals and the, by department and activities. And I'm just going to go ahead and remind you again that when we put this together and we are talking about the one-time dollars and the ongoing, that we have complied with this policy. And the, the set aside of, it's like one-point-three million, is not being used, utilized for ongoing, we did not commit that. And so, it had moved over to the one-time for this year. Again, just as a reminder on that pick-tack commitment. And then, one-time, just to show you the, kind of the core values and how they're lining up here, again, we had a number of investments in some replacement equipment, getting some things up to speed that perhaps were neglected during the recession. I'd be happy to have anyone ask any final questions on some of the one-time items. And then, these are just kind of summarized, again, the ongoing supplementals that are in your package tonight, too, and again, how they align to the strategic action plan. I'm going to move ahead, I'm just going to have a brief discussion here. Actually, Tracy, to some of my staff, tracks every 511th person that's here, where they're at and what they're doing, and all their pay packages that go with them. We did have in the budget for 13, 511 funded positions, and moving ahead to 14, as noted earlier tonight, we were able to keep that amount the same. Here were the changes. On the left, it's a current position title. Obviously, a couple of them that stand out would be the sanitation workers. We've had a number of work sessions that talked about the change in service level there. They were able to have substantial cost savings, and we'll talk about that next week as that fund is in balance, but we were able to, through attrition, take those positions and reclassify or reallocate, if you will, to higher priority positions that were coming up. And right off, the web developer, police records analyst, property evidence, those were some of the supplements that were addressed tonight. There's also Parks Foreman, industrial pre-treatment coordinator, and water resource planning advisor, the two, the pre-treatment and the water resource are in the utility funds. And other thing of interest to note, the industrial pre-treatment, if you have any questions on that, we probably can talk about that either tonight as a position, or again, next week, we'll be doing the enterprise funds. That is self-sufficient in that there will be revenue recovery on that pre-treatment coordinator.
Does anybody want to hear that now, or are you fine waiting this week? All right, thank you.
Okay, and with that, again, great conversation tonight on the supplements. Next week, we'll move ahead and we'll review the capital plan, which will address some of the larger items, like the ERP will be addressed in their streets, the utilities coming up, some big projects. We'll have a public board forum on May 1st, I believe it's in this building, again, the draft budget on the 6th, and then tentative session scheduled to adopt on the 20th and the 24th of June for the final, and then the property tax levy. So lots of good stuff to come, and then the legal requirements. And then, if there are no other questions, Dean Kokenauer will now present and discuss the health benefits update for this year.
Bill?
Before we kick into Dean, I just wanted to express to everybody my appreciation. There's a couple of positions in here that we knew we needed, the police records analyst, the property and evidence custodian, I saw the add-on of part-time public educators in the fire department. It's, obviously, through everyone's hard work, through the pressure that we've been applying to city management to keep us working within what we have, I'm glad to see those positions in there, I'm glad to see us making these changes, and it's good to see that we're able to grow things and still stay within the budget. So I appreciate all that hard work, and I'm glad we're able to get staff some of the support that they need to get their job done.
Joe?
Yeah, I just want to echo those comments. I appreciate, because when we had our 101s, I really wanted us to hold a 511 and see if we could reallocate and look at some efficiencies, and I knew we need some at police, I knew we needed those positions and a couple others, so appreciate the fact you were able to pull that off, and thank you for that, and staff looking at that and getting that happening.
Any other comments? I knew you wanted to break just a second. So next will be Dean. Is there a chance we could take a short break here? There's been a request at the table for a break, so I think five minutes, is that there? All right, we're all back at the table, so let's start out with Dean Kokenauer. Dean?
Good evening, Mayor, distinguished council members. Thank you for the opportunity to come to you this evening and talk briefly about our healthcare renewal for 2013. At the end of November, we were asked to put together a number of what we thought the best number would be for our renewal in terms of city funds for next year. The city today, this year, will expend about $5.9 million for healthcare, and that's both the city and the employee side. Employees pay for about $750,000 of that $5.9 million. At that time, we looked at our loss ratio, and if we stayed with the exact plan designs and nothing changed, we anticipated about $1 million is what would be needed in new funds. As we went through the renewal process, we did go to market, we went to all of the major carriers, and finally got down to the final three, and had we have stayed with our existing platform, we still believe that we would have been in the neighborhood of $900 to a $950,000 increase. But by doing a number of different things, we've been able to dramatically lower that number. One of the things we looked at was a change from the PPO product that we have today to an HMO product. But one of the key elements in moving towards that decision was what we had put in place about four years ago, and that was the Goodyear Health and Wellness Clinic. At that clinic, we can do virtually anything that you can do with your primary care physician in almost all cases. The clinic today has over 4,000 visits on an annualized basis, on a part-time basis. The clinic is only open from 8:00 AM to noon, Monday through Saturday, and on Wednesdays from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Over half of our employees today utilize the clinic as their primary care physician. And one of the big changes in going from a PPO to an HMO product is although the specialists are exactly the same, so if the employee is seeing a specialist today, they can continue to see the exact same specialist, the networks are identical with Cigna between the PPO and the HMO network. So that was one of the things that was very attractive. But there was a concern about referrals and having to go for a new event, you would have to go to a Cigna staff model facility to be referred out. We were able to negotiate with Cigna and our health and wellness clinic so that now the clinic has the ability to actually refer out in the Cigna staff model facility. Without that piece, the movement to the HMO product would not have made sense for us. But because of the number of visits and the number of our employees utilizing that wellness clinic as their primary care, it made sense. In moving from the PPO to the HMO platform, that move alone brought us down to a $500,000 number, so there was a substantial savings in doing so. So working with Cigna and the clinic, we were able to get that done. On the HMO platform, the co-pays are exactly the same when it comes to the drugs, doctor visits, ER, urgent care, there's been no change in that this year. There was a modest increase in in- and outpatient events from $500 to $750. That's a one-time payment for employee only, and it would be times two in a full family. So if you had the event and another family member had an event, then after that, there would be no charge. Then we took a look at some of our plan designs, and when I say "we," I'm talking about the insurance committee for the City of Goodyear. The insurance committee is made up of representatives of a number of the key departments that look at all the elements that make up the plan design and the costs, and make recommendations to the city manager. Today, we have three different plans that we offer our employees. That's a little bit unique, and it is more than most entities our size would offer. So we looked at and recommended the elimination of the 1,200-400 consumer-driven plan. From a cost perspective, it simply didn't make sense to keep that plan in place, and there were savings associated with that. We then took a look at adding modest co-insurance at the lowest level we could add to the consumer-driven plan that has a 2,400 employee-only, 4,800 full-family deductible. And it was a 10% co-insurance, up to $500 for employee-only coverage, and 10% co-insurance, up to $1,000 for employee and spouse, employee and child, or full-family coverage. The last thing that the committee considered as a recommendation was to cost-shift a portion of the premium, the total premium, and just by comparison, the total premium today for full-family coverage is about $20,000 on an annual basis. Employee-only coverage is about $7,000 on an annual basis. So to cost-shift a percentage of that premium over to the employees. And that number that's being recommended to you this evening is a 4% cost shift. When we take a look at...
Excuse me, Joe has a question.
Just for the record, that, go back to that one slide there, would you, Dean? This is what the city employees insurance committee has recommended.
The only piece that wasn't, the insurance committee actually recommended a little higher co-insurance. We've modified that, and the insurance committee actually recommended a 5% cost shift, and that's been modified to 4.
Okay.
I have a quick question. Sherry? And when we were talking about the high deductible plan, because you're, we're going to have the two plans now, you said for the health savings account, the city does put some money towards that health savings account, is that correct?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. The consumer-driven plan, the 2,400-4,800 high deductible, has additional cost savings, and those cost savings, for the most part, are passed back on to the employee in terms of funding into their HSA account. So when we say that they have a $4,800 deductible, the city funds 1,800 of that, so they really have a $3,000 deductible. And on employee-only at 2,400, the city funds back 600 of that, so they really have an $1,800 deductible.
Just one more quick question. Back to the other slide, just for transparency and clarity, under our plan, if an employee wants to keep their own family doctor, the only option they have is either single 2,400 high deductible or 4,800 high deductible, which means before the insurance kicks in, I just want to make sure I'm getting this right, they're going to pay single 2,400 less the 600, plus the, if their family, they're going to pay 4,800 less the 16?
1,800.
1,800, before the insurance actually pays any of their costs. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, that is correct.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So when we take a look at what employees pay today, and we take a look at a number of different options, the employee-only coverage, the employee pays $200 of the HMO plan today. Full-family coverage, they pay $2,367, and these are annualized numbers. At a 4%, we can see that that would go up substantially, so it's more than double for employee-only coverage, or an additional $302. And for full-family coverage would be an additional $981.
Did you say annual, Dean?
Yes.
These are annuals, so if you divide that by 26, that roughly tells them how much per paycheck?
Yes.
Okay.
So the impact of the cost shifting, the city side of the funds is $5.1 million, and at 4%, with all of the things that we had put in place, we also did some negotiation with Cigna behind the scenes. We received an additional $30,000 credit that'll go on our first month's bill in July. We were also able to have our employee assistance program that we now pay about $11,000 for, rolled into and included in the pricing, so that money dropped to the bottom line. We also have a wellness fund that we fund our wellness initiatives from, like the mom van, the pop van, health fare, the flu shots, those things that we're doing inside of that program, and they increased that an additional $10,000 during the negotiation. So there are other things behind the scenes that we were able to do as well. That brought that number that we thought was going to be close to $1 million, down to a total of $174,000 in new funds with the 4% cost shift of total premium to the employee.
Sherry?
Dean, the last several years, there's been a program where our employees could get a discount if they basically did the screening. Is that going to be part of it this year as well, where they get the discount, the premium, if they do the screening?
Mayor, Councilmember Loretano, yes, and this takes into account that all employees would get that 10% discount for participating in one of those three early diagnostic programs. However, we do have 10 employees today that have not participated, and they, in fact, do not have that 10% discount, so they are paying 10% more of premium than the numbers we see here. And so, by example, for full-family coverage, they're spending an additional $2,000 a year by not participating.
Joe?
Dean, on that slide you had, I think it was two back on the increase, where was it? You know, one more up, I think? That broke the bar chart. Which one's the bar chart? Keep going. Right there. Is the, we have the employees and child at 1916, at 2, where it's going up 792. Is that the net, because you have pre-taxed, or is that before the pre-tax, that increase?
That, Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, that is actually before taxes, so we're not seeing that in an after-tax format. I do have maybe something that could help clarify that.
I'm just trying to get an idea, because a lot of times, we hear the discussions, whether it's in the public or citizens that talk to us, as far as, you know, the cost of how the employees, you know, are shifting and picking up, you know, more of their costs as it's associated with, and you can see even with the employee-only, it's, what, 150% increase? But again, it doesn't take into consideration the tax, and on the other one, it looks like it's about 30 or 40% increase on some of the others. So I guess the point is, I'm just trying to make sure that everybody clearly understands what these impacts are.
Could I have Elmo?
Of course, that would mean I'd have to run it. This is like a reality show.
There you go.
Oh, can you make it? Oh, good, thank you.
There you go. Move it, yeah, okay.
The chart in front of you at the moment is the after-tax effect per check. So 78% of our employees are on that HMO product, it's now, PPO would be going to an HMO product. They have the largest impact. Those folks that are on the 1,200-2,400 plan that's going away, we're no longer going to offer. The 16 employees that have either employee and child, employee and spouse, or full family, if they stay on a high deductible plan, they will actually see a decrease per check. And in the 2,400-4,800, because we have now moved to parity, so that employees on all plans are paying 17% with this 4% increase, they actually have a very, very modest increase in their plan, and there are about 15% of our employees that are on our healthcare plan are in that plan.
Just want to make sure I understand this correctly. If you're on the current HMO, because there was more of a subsidy on the high deductible than there was the HMO, the shift now, if you had family before and you have family now, it's a 27 and 17 cent net increase per pay. Am I, is that what I'm reading? Is that what that's saying?
Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, that is correct.
Okay. And if you happen to be on the high deductible now, and you happen to be in employee only, you're getting a, depending on, it would be $8 and some on net, so, okay. I just want to make sure I'm reading the chart correctly.
That's correct.
Okay.
Can you switch back to the regular presentation? Thank you. And part of the reason why we suggested the 4% and why the insurance committee originally recommended 5 was we took a look at our benchmark cities and how we compared. The lower two lines where we see proposed EE, that's employee-only coverage, and the current employee-only coverage, it moves it from a 3% today to a 7% effective July 1, and that's why you see a substantial jump in terms of the percentage of what they pay. And then on full family, we see current and proposed, the top two lines, where currently on the HMO product, we pay 13%, but on the consumer-driven plans today, we pay 18%. So this just looks at the HMO product, and the movement would be to 17% of premium, and would lower the consumer-driven from 18 to 17%, so there'd be parity.
Yes, Joe?
I really appreciate... I really appreciate this graph, but as we have had this discussion in the past, it's hard comparing product to product, because other cities have various different deductibles and what they're allowed. For example, with us, I don't think, and you tell me if I'm wrong, there's any other city in the surrounding area that requires an individual who picks their own primary care physician to go on a high deductible plan. I mean, that's where we're probably the exception. Now, I know where we have the other side, which is up, we also have the clinic, which costs manage. So we're still comparing somewhat apples and oranges when we see those numbers, but again, it's helpful seeing it, but I know it's also hard trying to compare all the different type of plans that all these different cities have, to try to get it straight across. The point I'm making is that I just wanted to make sure for the general public that when it comes to the employees' benefits, what they're giving up and what options they have, you know, as far as, you hear this always Cadillac plans, non-Cadillacs, but it's not a Cadillac plan. From my perspective, it's probably mid or below. So I just want to make sure that gets across when we start seeing these numbers on these comparisons, because I think that's important when you look at some of these and you try to compare them, so.
Sherry. First of all, Dean, I want to thank you for keeping the costs as low and affordable when we hear that health costs, care costs are just going out the window, so I really do appreciate that, and you really made me a believer in the health savings account in our conversations on how that works. And I do appreciate the fact you are giving our employees a choice, the ability to keep a plan in there where they can keep their own doctor, because I know choice is very important. But with a large bulk of our employees on the HMO plan, I don't really know how that works, since our clinic isn't open at night. I don't know about you, but no one in my house gets sick at, you know, office hours. Yeah, no one gets sick at that time. Usually like midnight, 1 o'clock. How does that work for the urgent cares or the hospitals, since our clinic, although it's great service when they're open, they don't have those late evening hours? How does that work if an HMO for our citizens, or for our employees?
Mayor, Councilmember Loretano, the urgent cares and the emergency rooms are exact same. The PPO network, the HMO network, they're exactly the same, there's no difference there. So the employees still have that access. Where the clinic comes into play is in getting referred out to a specialist. That's really the big piece there that helps out. So they still have that 24-hour coverage. Emergency room is covered worldwide. Even if you're in Mexico, you have to pay out of pocket, save your receipts, and you're reimbursed when you get back.
Thank you. Jen?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you. You've done a lot of work on this, and I know you worked really hard to get the best plan for the employees, and I know that our job is to try and keep a tight squeeze on the money and do what we can. I'm a little bit passionate about this issue. I have a lot of professional experience, and I have a lot of personal experience with health insurance. And I think, just so that you have a little bit of history, in late '90s, when I worked at KPRC in Houston, I had a series called HMO Mondays, and I had an endless, an endless supply of stories, of just outrageous things that were happening to these consumers. And I'm hoping things have gotten better over the years, but when I go, when I look at this and it says going to a true HMO plan, it just makes my stomach do backflips. And then in 2002, I became a cancer patient, and over the years, I mean, I have gone back and forth, you know, trying to find care, and I had to move my family to Arizona so I could get quality care at Mayo Clinic. So when I look at this, I just want to make sure, before I agree to something like this, that our employees will be able to go out of network, to go to Mayo, to go to CTA, CTCA, to go to these places. I just want to make sure that we have that on the record before I buy into the plan. And I know, you know, with the PPOs that I've had over the years, I have had a peace of mind, and I have paid dearly. I have paid thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars out of my own pocket, but it was an option that I had, and it was something that I wanted to do, and thank goodness that I did. But I just want to hear from you, can our employees on this plan see who they want to see to get that quality care?
Mayor, Councilmember Barber. Couple of things. One, the Cigna HMO product is not new to the city. We actually had the product back in 2003, 2004, 2005. A little over 25% of our employees were on the plan at that time, and we had employees that were very, very happy with that HMO product. Cancer Treatment Centers of America, Mayo Clinic are still in-network. Again, it's the same network for specialists on the HMO and the PPO. There were some concerns about, well, what if I go to a staff-model facility and I can't get to a specialist that I want to see, which is absolutely why it was critical that the health and wellness clinic then had the ability to do that referral out. So that's a concern. A lot of that has gone away, because you can still go to the Goodyear Health and Wellness Clinic to get that referral. There are problems going out of network. So if it's out of Cigna's PPO network for specialists, then there would not be coverage, and you would, in fact, have to go to the consumer-driven high deductible plan to have out-of-network coverage, providing it was a covered event, but out-of-network coverage then is double the deductible, but that is extremely norm in healthcare.
Thank you. Joe?
Just a comment. I know we're going to these, what they call consumer-driven models, and I'll give you a little story, and I don't know the legal ramifications, but I kind of wish maybe the governor would have looked a little closer at that plan she just vetoed as far as pricing, but I had an event with my wife. She's different insurance than we have, but we actually had rental equipment that was important, that she had to wear to, on a wound. It's called a wound bag. Calling the insurance company to get a price, because she has $2,500 for rental, right up top. Trying to get a price from them on, okay, what's the price? Well, I can't tell you that. It depends on what the insurance company pays. I says, well, then how do I know when my 2,500 runs out? Well, when it does, we'll call you. But by then, I'm paying. So then I turn around and I get the doctor to call the rep, and I ask the doctor, can you get me an answer to get the rep to call me back? So the rep says, I never get any call. So eventually, what we did is, we had her discontinue it, because I had no idea what this thing was costing me, probably a little prematurely, but if nobody's given me a price of what it's costing me, I'm not paying for it. So we sent it back to them, and we forgot to put the charger in there, because this thing charges overnight with its battery. Come to find out, we called up their center. Where do I send it to? I can't tell you that information. I rep has to call you back. I'm still waiting for the rep to call. It's been about 30 days. So I understand the concept of consumer-driven, but again, and again, I don't know the details of the bill the governor just vetoed on the consumer-driven, getting prices, but if it's going to be consumer-driven, you gotta be able to know what the price options are. And, I mean, it just, it was so frustrating dealing with that one company that rented equipment that wouldn't tell you anything. So how can you be consumer-driven, you know, when it comes to that? So I think, you know, this healthcare issue is still evolving, and I understand that, but I mean, at some point, we've got, as consumers, we've got to be able to be able to, what is this cost? What is that cost? And that's, to me, is the most frustrating, especially if you're renting equipment. Just a comment, on what my experience has been, trying to get information out of medical providers.
Any other? Thank you, Joe. Final questions. Bill?
What is the staff recommendation? 3, 4, 5%? Do we have one?
Mayor, Councilmember Stip is 4%.
Okay, thank you.
Holly?
I understand that the employee committee recommended 5%.
Yes.
What is the thinking of why we're going to 4%? Well, I've already asked him, but they said apparently it's council's, council indicated that that was what you were comfortable with, I guess, is how I want to say it.
Joe?
From my perspective, when you're shifting the cost 68% to 150%, I thought 4 was a reasonable compromise. That's my perspective.
Sherry?
Yeah, I think we were in the same meeting, and for me, the issue was, I'd like to, if we got to move it up, move it up in smaller increments, because we're only giving a 2.5, you know, the raise isn't going to be as high, and, you know, and it just goes up in little tiny increments, and maybe cost shift rather than a big jump, a littler jump, so.
Bill?
Yeah, I had, we were in a different meeting, but that was the same as Councilman Pizzillo. In addition to that, we still have the rising cost shift of the retirement system being pushed to the ASRS employees, and I don't know that in their discussion about the 5%, if they were looking at their total package, or just a tiny little sliver of it, so 4% seemed like a good compromise.
Is there any thought about your family, the employee paying more if they're going to cover their family?
Joanne?
Well, I think that Dean and his team have done a wonderful job trying to keep down the insurance rates, and I know for my own employees that we had to make major changes, because we were seeing, I think, about a 35% increase. And, you know, this is an issue, a topic for me that's always difficult, because I see it in the small business sector, of what, you know, I pay my employees 100%, but they are responsible for their families. You know, I can't afford that. I, quite frankly, was a 5-percenter when it came to this discussion, and so when it came down to council, I will tell you, I was at the 5%.
Any other comments? Joe?
Just one. My biggest concern as we move forward is, we got, we're a 500, we have 500 employees. We have a diverse group of professionals, from engineers to lawyers to water technicians, so we're competing with the big companies. We're competing with the Lockheads, the APS, the other large organizations. And I realize some of the other organizations that are competing with don't have to have those type of healthcare plans, because their competition just doesn't pay it. You're probably, you're probably one of those organizations that probably pay that others don't. You know, there's probably some that don't pay their employees any healthcare benefit.
I'm sure there's...
So my point is, is, the point I want to make is, as we move forward, and that's why the 4%, I want to make sure we're still competitive, because again, on the example that Jen was using, the only way, if you want, if you're comfortable with your own health provider, your own doctor, you're going to pay the high deductible, which means 2,400 less 600 is coming out of your pocket before it pays anything, or 4,800 less 1800 is coming out of your pocket before you pay any, you don't have any choice, okay? So, and again, I don't have any other city that that limits that option, which is okay, because again, we're trying to save money, and I understand that, but to keep throwing more with a jump of 150% for one, and 68%, if I'm not mistaken on the other, I think is a reasonable push forward. That's why the 4. And again, I think competitive, because of the nature of what we do, is important, and that's where I'm coming from.
Joanne?
Well, and I agree, and that's why we've been, the fact that we've been able to start to give some pay increases again, you know, not only do the employees deserve it, but we do want to be competitive. And, you know, my issue, though, is that we're also government. We're not a for-profit business, and so we have to take those in consideration. And when we look at, even though it may be apples and oranges, we cannot tell by this chart of other cities across the board, Dean, if you were able to say, you may not know all their products, actually, what they have, the different cities, if you were able to say there was a city you know is the closest to us, with the exception, well, what was the city that was looking at us? They loved our clinic. I know we had one city that was really interested in trying, was it Tempe, or was it, who was it?
Mayor, Councilmember Osborne. Actually, we've had several cities.
Oh, good.
Tempe, Chandler, Bioria have all come over, toured our facility, and all have attempted to put one in place, or in fact, will be putting one in place.
And that's great, but we have no control over healthcare. I mean, that's, it's facing us every day, and unfortunately, the city can't control it, businesses can't control it, our own government won't control it. So, I mean, it's a problem, and we have to deal with it, and when we're talking about 4% to 5%, you know, that's, it's not a huge difference, but I still lean on the 5%.
Sherry?
I want to be very clear. I'm very pleased with the plans that Dean brought forward. I think this is the best for the times that we're in, and I've been on one of the, this is not a Cadillac plan. I hear people throw that around. This is not, this is pretty much major medical, major, major problems, because you're bearing the cost for you and your family. I've been on one of those Cadillac plans, where it was $100, and my daughter, after her birth, was in the hospital, in Scottsdale Hospital, for like four days, and it was $100. That's, and that's another city. That was a city, but they've had to change their plans too. And I think, you know, when we're looking at the city, the employees are bearing a good cost, you know, they're bearing a large portion of their own healthcare insurance, and I think Dean's done a great job to keep the cost as low as possible right now for the city. It's not a perfect plan. We would like to have the best healthcare, but unfortunately, that's not the times we're living in now, and there's a lot of other issues and reasons because of that. But I think you've done a good job in balancing, keeping the cost low for our citizens, keeping the cost low for our employees, and giving them the choice, you know, the best choice that we can. So I appreciate that.
Any other comments? Thank you. All right. I'm sorry, what?
Performance measures.
Yeah, I'm going to enjoy it. Update on the city performance management. Elaine, are you, yeah, Schmearbeck, and then we're going to have John Casella and Susan Petty also. Welcome to the table.
Did I not get that one? Is that on the work session?
That's what I was looking at.
I think it's on work session. Okay.
It's on, it's 3.2, sorry.
Oh, here it is.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are gathered here this evening to present to you the performance measures program. Yes, Goodyear staff has done a phenomenal job in moving this program forward. There are two staff members here with me tonight who have really stepped up. I call them affectionately our performance measure gurus. Susan Petty, the Support Services Manager for the Police Department, will start the presentation. John Casella, the Inter-Governmental Program Coordinator, will end the presentation, and I'll be somewhere in the middle. So take it away, Susan.
A tough act to follow. If I was nervous, I'm not anymore, after the word "gather today" comment. The budget presentation was a great lead-in for our performance measurement presentation this evening. Some of the key themes that you heard in the budget presentation were accountability, respect for taxpayers, efficiencies, solutions. In addition to that, you have the strategic action plan, and in reading that, across all of the goals, there are key words and phrases that you see consistently, no matter what the goal is. Innovation, accountability, transparency, process improvement, team-oriented approach to problem-solving. And that really sets us up for success, because a good performance measurement system is designed to support the strategic focuses that you talked about this evening. A good performance measurement program is going to increase accountability. It's going to build your public trust. It will aid in planning and budgeting models. It's a tool to improve the delivery management of services, and it's also intended to foster a climate of innovation. So the performance measurement team knew where we wanted to go, but we've all seen performance measurement programs that haven't been very successful, or municipalities have started them and they've stopped. And we wanted to avoid these fits and starts, and really bring forth a performance measurement program that was very successful, that we could sustain and would last for years. We did a lot of research, national, county, other municipalities, and we found that successful performance measurement programs all had these five key elements in them. So we thought, aha, we want to make sure our program is designed with these five key elements, and really set ourselves up for success. We found that organizations that were successful performance measures with great programs, they had adopted a culture of performance, that the organization supported performance measurement, and they believed in the benefits of performance measurement. We also found that each and every person involved in the performance measurement program clearly understood what they were measuring and how to measure it. So they had good guidelines and very defined processes for creating measures and how to report them. Successful organizations also used their performance measurement programs. They applied performance measurement to the strategic planning models, to budgeting models. When they were doing any long-term planning, they made sure to take a look at their measures and what their measures were telling them for the future. Successful organizations also benchmarked against themselves and other entities for innovation, process improvement, to ensure that we were delivering services. to ensure that we were delivering services, doing the right things and doing them very well. And ultimately, good performance measurement programs are used. Data is collected, it's analyzed, evaluated, and it's discussed frequently amongst all staff members, department heads, council. Everybody discusses, sees the data. And it's really a tool, and it's utilized very effectively to get where you want to go. So we knew why. We knew what a successful one looked at, looked like. And we made sure to design our program bearing all those elements in mind. So our performance measurement program overview, we had decided to create a structural design for the system to make sure the program gave us information and it was sustainable, meaningful, and used. That it gave us actionable intelligence that we could use to make great decisions. Instead of just collecting the data and reporting it, that we looked at it and analyzed it, learned something from it. We want to make sure it's discussed all of the time, reviewed all the time, and minimally presented formally to council twice a year. We want to link it to our planning and budgeting processes. Key to the performance measurement program is to make sure that we present a very balanced family of measures. We've seen a lot of programs that are very workload activity heavy, a lot of counts, how many permits, how many of these, how many employees. And those do serve a very good purpose for workload management, but they're just one part of the story. And we wanted to make sure we presented a very balanced program that had measures that spoke to all audiences, our citizens, elected officials, managers, executive management, line-level managers, and to our employees. So our design of our program today really focuses on these key elements that we saw in successful programs, and also supports the council's vision for the future with the accountability and the public trust and the transparency. This graphic will set the stage for the rest of the presentation. It outlines the steps that we've taken year one for the performance measurement program. And we've systematically gone through each one to get where we are today. And we will also show you what pieces we are still working on. As we've gone through all the steps, the large arrow at the bottom shows we're creating a handbook and a dictionary to codify the program. So heaven forbid if Elaine and John and Susan aren't here tomorrow, somebody else can pick up the book. And we all have that mutual understanding of what we're trying to achieve. But out of all these steps, the first one to us to adopt a culture of performance. And I had mentioned this earlier, it really is supportive and seen throughout council planning documents, through the budget process. And ultimately, and I'll just take a moment to thank City Manager Brian Dahlke. One of the reasons that we saw in other municipalities where a performance measurement program might not have been so successful, it was just a to-do list checkmark for executive management. And on behalf of the team, we thank you because you've been, he's been very active and involved every step of the way. And we're bumping into each other. What can we do to help you, Brian? And his response is, that doesn't matter. What can I do to help you? He's reviewed every document and really set the tone operationally for adopting that culture of performance. The second step we took was to adopt a consistent performance measurement methodology. Within that, we selected a statement of service approach that I'll discuss in the next slide. But we also decided we wanted to give our program a name and an identity. This is something you'll see as a, we still need to do it. We haven't had that blinding flash of insight on what to call it. But we want to make sure we give it its own name. When you hear phrases like comstat or city stat, you might not know the details, but the listener instantly knows that's a program designed to do something better. We want that same recognition with this program. The second step was to select the department measures, to actually reach out to the departments, talk about the statement of service approach, identify the measures, make sure we had data sources for those measures. Because a fantastic measure where you're counting individual papers, you have to make sure that you're not outweighing the benefit of that measure. Or you can target for future improvement to automate things. We know we want this measure and we're going to get it in the future. We also want to determine the administration of the system. The best systems have been completely scuttled with nobody understanding who's responsible to collect it, who's responsible to send it, who's collating it. So we nailed down those specifics as well. In our first year, we're focusing on our measures at the department level. Each year after that, we will review those measures and ask ourselves, do we need to modify them? Are they telling us what we want to know? Do we need to add to them? So that is key to that step, that we're not just going to say, this is it, that we'll learn and grow every year with our performance measurement program. The next step is to create the analysis team, to identify those people in the organization who will get together and look at that data consistently. We want to apply descriptive statistics, establish baselines for our information. So we know, okay, this number is 50 this month, last month it was 30. What does that tell us? We're going to partner with departments and make sure that we are partners in that process to identify outliers or changes, changes in that data. We want to be able to tell the rest of the story instead of just reporting information. Ultimately, our final step for the performance measurement program is to twice-year reports to council, monthly, quarterly discussions amongst department heads and within each department. We're also participating in Valley Benchmark that Elaine will talk to you about later, to help us with that benchmarking for innovation we spoke about earlier. And we want to produce an annual report, the results of a year's worth of measuring, and any lessons we've learned, or information we've been able to glean from our performance measurement data. So those are our steps that we are very deliberately taking for success for our performance measurement program.
Any comments?
I know that guy.
He looks like me.
Those were not the comments I was expecting.
That's not the comments of marijuana.
Yeah, okay. But again, if I was nervous, I'm not now. So my first step, the statement of service methodology, I'll review that quickly and then show you an example of how we put that into practice. But it was very important to us to adopt this approach. It's based on some previous work by a consultant from about 10 years ago at the city. And it, it means a lot to employees to make sure that you are gathering data that isn't just workload-heavy, that you're telling the whole story and a complete story of what they do for the citizens and their customers. So this is why it was critical for us to choose this approach. It provides piercing clarity on what you're measuring. It instantly does the mindset on what service, department, or project or program you want to measure. It answers some very critical questions. For the department, who's their primary customer? What is it that they do? And why, from a strategic level, do they provide that service? Why do they do what they do? So it's easier to measure when you have that understanding. It has built-in indicators of success. So when somebody says, well, so what? Why are we measuring how many times a street sweeper goes through a residential area? We understand why. We've already established it's very important from a citizen's perspective, so that is why we're going to measure it. Balanced set of measures, recurring theme in our program tonight. And it avoids the unintended consequences of the cartoon you see on the slide about, it's not just about evaluating how many tickets go through, did we do the right thing for the people who called the help desk? So it sets us up for success with avoiding some of those unintended consequences. So we reviewed our methodology. Our next step was to select department measures and identify those data sources. I have an example for you from the city clerk's office, that I'll just review putting the methodology and some of the sample measures together. This isn't the whole story from the clerk's office. It's just select ones for the presentation. For their statement of piercing clarity, it establishes the who, the what, and the why. Who is their customer? What it is the clerk's office does? And why? So for this example, it's for the benefit of the public. And while the clerk's office has many customers, internal and external, their primary customer is our public. They maintain and manage government records, administratively support council boards, commissions, committees, and community facilities districts, we had to practice that before tonight. And they conduct elections. And why? For transparent government. So I've now established the framework of why it's important to measure the clerk's services. Moving on to the indicators of success, from the customer perspective, from the public, what do they want? Well, they want easily accessible information, but they're secure and accurate. They want to know open meetings are occurring. Strategically, why do we have a clerk's office? It's to help us have an active and involved population, and to support the transparency in government. And what they do, the workload, the activities that they undertake. I've now established that framework, the indicators for success, which makes measurement a lot easier. Now, instead of saying, what does the city clerk's office do? And what the heck do I measure? I've established these success indicators from their customer, from a manager, from a why they exist perspective. So sample measures include percent of public records requests completed within a stated goal, number of registered voters who voted is shown as a percentage, that open meeting law training has been completed, council action requests are processed appropriately, turned in by the deadline, and compliance with records retention statutes. So just a few as an example of our methodology.
Joe?
Just a quick one on an active and involved population. I find that one kind of interesting because no matter how hard we try, the number of registered voters when voted shown as a percentage, I'm not sure how much of that is really in our control. I, I mean, I could be wrong. I mean, clerk's got a better handle on it than I do. But I understand what you're trying to do. But I mean, we've gone even as far as to send out, going to an all-mail-in ballot where all they have to simply do is sign and send it in. And we still run it 24%. So I just find that one kind of interesting because we've tried. And I guess, how would you measure the clerk on that particular one? I mean, do you have, I mean, how do you know whether succeeding or not? Because we've done it about as easy as you can, just, just on that one. Does that make some sense on that one? All the others I follow make sense that you listed up there. It's just that one because of what we've done. And again, we went from like 9% to 25%, so we, we increased it. But it's kind of plateaued there. And I don't know what it's going to take to, because again, I'd love to see it at 95%, but probably a little bit too optimistic on that one.
Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, most of the measures are to help us assess service delivery and the effectiveness of those services, and to do better for our citizens. Some might not be a direct reflection on performance. They just provide us the data necessary to assess, we've done something, did it have our intended change? So we can say, you know, we've tried all of these things. Do we need to think outside of the box? Or is this the way it is? Now we'll have the data to have that discussion.
Okay.
So they're, they're intended more for the data as opposed to a performance issue.
Okay.
We provided just highlights from the departments. We've met with each department and come up with sample measures fitting that methodology. And just in the essence of time, I won't review everything in detail. However, just some highlights from different departments, from a customer perspective. We're taking a look at responsible fiscal management, responsible project management. From a strategic perspective, a sustainable community, revenue-based, a sustainable community that provides the live, work, and play balance. Activities and workloads, permits and plan reviews. We can measure all of those things from the departmental perspective, customer perspective, and workload perspectives, website hits, credit rating, bond rating, assessed valuation and new growth, permits issued. It's just another way, more examples for our methodology. Additional examples, police, parks and recreation, fire, city manager, sustainable and prosperous community, that's one of the reasons for the manager's office. They're the tip of the spear administratively to make sure we're operationalizing our policies and council policies and desires and direction. Engaged in satisfied employees from human resources, that's one of the reasons we have a human resources department. I can measure that. The court processes cases, police department, one of our services, to provide very quickly public information when they would like a case report, or to be visible in the community. Because in Goodyear, it makes a difference. We can measure all of those things. When we adopted the statement of service methodology, one of our concerns was, we weren't being inclusive enough, or have we pigeonholed ourselves in to this statement of service approach and we're leaving something out? So what we did is a cross-check. We took a look at the strategic goal areas from the Strategic Action Plan. And we thought, if we're on the right track, these measures that have been selected from the departments and working with them should fit naturally under these goals, without any outliers. So we did that. We took our measures that we had established and made sure that they had just naturally, without making one of them fit an appropriate home under one of the goals. And so we did that. All of the measures that are in the slideshow fit very naturally into one of the strategic goals. So we knew we were on the right track without an outlier. Fund balance, credit rating, spring trading revenue, all in support of fiscal and resource management. Economic vitality, jobs, employers, assessed valuation, making sure that we provide our over-the-counter plan review for minor permits, 90% of the time, right there at the counter. We know that that's important for bringing people to the community. Projects are completed on schedule. All the departments are lending measures in support of our goals. A sense of community, the website, proactive patrol time, registered voters who vote. We might see an uptick. You never know with the performance measurement program. Suddenly, it skyrockets.
Joe?
I think there was a song, something about.
Who knows?
You have, I guess, the mechanism in place, I see a lot of data collection here, potential data. Do you have the mechanism in place, once this is implemented, to be able to actually capture this data that you're looking for?
To simulate it? Is that what you're saying?
I guess. Because I mean, a lot of this requires some type of database, or some type of entry, or somebody putting information in to see if you're meeting these measures.
Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, that was, we've really met with departments to talk about those administrative details. And most of the departments have data collection systems already in place, be it an Excel spreadsheet, or police has our very elaborate records management system.
No, you do, yeah.
So we targeted measures that we knew data collection systems were already there. So we wouldn't create undue, pull out your paper and pencil, we want you to track it anyway. It will take some time and effort, but we did focus on data we had available that was already being called by departments. We created a central point for them to report their measures back to, to make it easier for the evaluation. And then we have loaned ourselves out as part of the analysis to assist with that as well. So while it will be, it will take resources, we're trying to share that burden and not create undue, complicated systems to get the data.
And I understand. And some of your measures may be a percentage of satisfaction from our customers, which means some type of survey that's got to be somewhat anonymous, so you're getting, you know, good data. Who would be, I would assume there'd be a lead person somewhere within your group that would design and, and I guess, you know, send out that survey? How would that mechanics, is that, are you guys to that point yet on the mechanics of that?
Mayor, Councilmember Pizzillo, it's something that we haven't delved into great detail. We have identified it as that will be a, a need. Right now, we're taking a team approach to get that data with what we have, with systems that are in place. The designing of future surveys, that'll be a discussion for the future. Right now, it will be a team approach with what we do have.
John, would you like to be spoken?
Yeah, just, Mayor Lord, Councilmember Pizzillo, I just wanted to say that, you know, as we do this program, as Susan has indicated, in a lot of ways, we're kind of rolling it out at this point. And a lot of the questions that you're asking are really part of the administrative process. So for example, I was looking today at Maricopa County, they actually have a certification process whereby they go in and review the data being submitted by the departments, and then certify whether or not that data actually is being collected accurately. Given the importance of the data part of this, in statistical terms, they refer to it as validity, making sure that you're measuring what you think you're measuring. As part of the administrative structure for going forward with the program, you're going to need to have an administrative function that looks at that process, and probably should at some point sit down with departments and actually review the databases being used. Because you want to know that, for example, all the data you're saying is being collected is actually what you're getting. So it should become part of the program as it evolves forward.
Okay, thank you.
Joanne?
On sense of community, I know this is probably just a sample of items. I would, I would hope that you are also getting the percent of people that are attending events, and also that are signing up for programs. I mean, I, I would imagine they have, you know, I know over the years that I had seen, the babysitting class was always filled up, CPR classes were always filled up, but maybe guitar lessons were not. You know, I mean, those are some simple things, but I would assume that you were looking at those big numbers. And then at the end of the day, once all that data is collected, maybe back to what you just, what stated, Susan, was that, when do you decide this isn't worthy of our money? When do you decide, make that decision? Or do you bring out, is that what you just said in a different way?
Yeah, but I think that's when it comes to us in the budget process of where you want to put your resources.
Well, I think that, as I look at this, it's all encompassing, the information that you're going to be able to derive out of this. I, I think you'll be looking at it at budget time and at other decision-making times. Because I'm terribly impressed in depth that this is going to be, and usability of it. I can see it beyond just the performance. I can see us really using this to analyze many different budget decisions in the future and things we want to incorporate in our city. So I have to tell you, I'm So I have to tell you, I'm really impressed, I really wanted this in the worst way because I just, when you throw out a number that we have this percentage of performance, you know, based in the city, and I always think, really? And so now I can, I can say, really? You know, I can change my attitude on this, and I know it's going to take a lot of time for staff, and it's going to take training for the people doing it because it is a difficult. I think we've all had to make reviews before, and you know how difficult it is. So, so far, I have to tell you, I'm, I'm just awed by it. I think, I think if it all goes as you say, and we're able to move it along and develop it, I think it's going to be really, and it's going to be, give us answers that we can transcend to the public. When you get people calling in, writing in, emailing with complaints, and sometimes they target staff, and sometimes they target our programs, and to me, this is going to have a wealth of information in order to formulate our responses to them, a proven response. So I really am, so I didn't mean to cut you off on this, but I just, as this came up. Bill?
Susan, this is obviously a, it's a management function, but are we going to get a look at all of the performance measures, council? So that perhaps there's a look at it from a, so we're educated when we see it? Or if there's something that is important to us to say, can we please measure X, whatever that is?
Mayor, council?
How does that look?
Absolutely. That's actually one of our next steps that we'll be discussing is, we have all of the measures from the different departments, we're taking a final review of them and finalizing our handbook to roll out, and we're targeting July 1 just as a natural part of the fiscal calendar. So yes, and thank you for the compliments. The system has been designed to-
It also verifies positions. It verifies the need of when you create a position in the city, and everybody says, well, what do you need that for? Anybody can walk in and do that. And it also produces, as Joe was telling me today, you know, he was reminding me, give your spiel about the 500 companies, you haven't given that tonight, but about the quality, well, about the quality that cities do require to be a great city, so.
And again, just the diverse background of looking at our staff, from engineers to lawyers, as I mentioned earlier, I mean, and why do we need them? That's what this performance measures is going to help document, why we need them. You know, I've always been in the opinion too, is we're in a very risk business, you know? I mean, if our various public safety, or streets, or water, or engineering make mistakes, it's not a couple dollars, it could be millions. So it's important, at least from my perspective, we have the highly technical, highly competent, best and brightest, because it's, to me, it's a good business decision to mitigate the risk. Because again, you can always pay less, I remember that old saying when the guy used to change the oil, pay me now, pay me later, okay? You know, your quality of how you're training your personnel, your supervisors, your staff make a big difference on how you mitigate that risk, and that's why I'm a big proponent of not cutting corners when you're looking for the best and the brightest, because long-term, in my view, it's a good business decision, it saves us money, because we've seen what happens when we've had issues. So, you know, money is usually what it ends up costing us, and the more we can mitigate reducing that, I'm all in favor of, and that's why I like this program and the piggyback, was it, was it Joanne or, I like this with the mayor, I like the fact that we'll have the ability to see if what we, our goals and objectives are tied to these measures, are we achieving them, and we've got documentation. And if not, we may come to a point where we find out, maybe that's not what the citizens want, we can take those resources and put them somewhere else. We can reallocate resources based on top of the data that we're getting. So I think this is a great thing. You don't know whether you're succeeding or not, whether you've got the data to tell what you're doing, you know? I mean, it all helps in that process. So I appreciate the effort, and I'm a big proponent of this, in fact, you know, I'm a big proponent of budget, you know, doing budget by performance-
Well, it's numbers, Joe, it's numbers.
But by performance measures with budget, you know, I mean-
It helps answer those questions.
Yeah, the sequel to it. So again, I appreciate it, you're right, and it's numbers, and I like it, yes.
But no, it's a good thing, I, you and I want to say, it's data.
Yeah, thank you.
I should just, well, thank you, and call it, and on a high note. Ta-da! It's one of, it's one of the reasons that the program was designed, we knew we couldn't just deliver a list of measures. We wanted to deliver a system that you could use to answer all of those questions, planning, budgeting, programs, to give us the data and make, the actionable intelligence to make the great decisions. Thank you all very much for the compliments.
So next?
Next steps, oh, I have to-
John, do you have anything more to say? You were looking down here like maybe you're-
Well, no, Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Osborn, I actually was going to say you kind of hit the nail on the head, but the discussion kind of got back to that, you know, the data is a tool, and using recreation, I think, is a great example because what you will decide to do with your resources is going to be very much be value-driven. So we as staff will crunch the numbers and try to put it in a format that speaks to you clearly, try to remove the complexity and present the message, but ultimately through the management team and then to you, in some cases, you will have to decide, well, obviously in all cases, but you'll make choices based on whatever values are informing, whatever the community wants. I mean, we recently went through a process like that with sanitation and said, hey, you know, we can, we can leave it at a level that it's at, or we can reduce the level and maintain the cost, it's up to you, but if we maintain the level, it's going to be more expensive. The response to that was essentially, let's keep the cost where it is and reduce the service. And so our role is really to provide the raw data in a way that's understandable, and then through the management team, and then you, you make those decisions. So actually, it was a very poignant question.
Well, thank you very much.
Our system, our steps that we took as we're getting towards the last step here, creation of the analysis team and consistently reviewing, discussing, and reporting. This is where the team is right now. We've collected the measures and we're moving forward in our final steps, but we do have a sneak peek for valley benchmarking, where we've become active in the valley benchmarking for innovation currently, and at that point, I'll turn it over to Elaine to give you an update.
So we've talked about creating the performance measures, and we're going to be in collecting the data, but we want to do some comparison of our data, and we're just in the beginning of that, but we've made a lot of progress. Last fall, we joined, well, we are already members of ICMA, International City County Managers Association, but last fall, maybe it was even the summer, we joined their performance measures system. They actually have two. They have a comprehensive performance measurement system, and it's thousands of questions of data that they're collecting. Then they have a newer one called CPM, Center for Performance Measures 101. And those are for smaller communities or communities that are just starting performance measures, or communities that are just restarting performance measures. So instead of the thousands of questions, there were basically about 120 that almost all of our organization answered. And the areas that they covered were facilities management, fire and EMS, fleet management, highways and roads maintenance, human resources, information technology, parks and recreation, permits, land use and plan review, police, procurement, risk management, and solid waste. Those are actually, there are 13 areas. There was a 14th, the 14th area was libraries, and because we are in partnership, we do not own or operate, we did not answer that part of the survey. And in the survey, as we talked about numbers, they asked for lots of numbers. How much do you spend? How much are your square footages? What are your number of lane miles, your number of fleet, your number of calls of service, your response times? So we answered that survey and along with others in the United States coast-to-coast who belong to CPM 101. A few months later, we heard about this valley benchmark cities, and they are actually composed of large cities in Maricopa County. There are 10 of them, Scottsdale is in the lead, there's Surprise, Mesa, Avondale, Gilbert, Peoria, Chandler, Phoenix, and Tempe. And we looked at joining them, we're the smallest community, but they allowed us to come up to the table, and we've been sitting in on their meetings, and the beauty of this is, we're not, we can't, we are not comparing data with cities that are, say, in far the back east. For instance, it'd be very hard to compare our street maintenance costs with a city in Michigan or Minnesota who beats their streets up because of their snowplows. We don't, we don't have to do that. So it's, or someone who has an ocean in their backyard, or someone who's densely populated like Chicago and New York. We now have some, our neighbors, they're like us in Maricopa County, the same weather, basically the same density, and there are no oceans. Except for beaches, yes.
Sandy beaches.
We, in meeting with them, there was discussion of, well, how are we going to collect the data? And they talked about using the US Census and the gobs of data in there, and then they came across and said, what if we use the CPM 101 survey? And we thought, yes, it's wonderful because we've already, we've done it. So we're going to be using the CPM 101 survey data, and along with the representatives from these 10 cities, ASU is stepping in to help with the analysis, ICMA actually attends remotely, and we also have the Alliance for Innovation who's extremely interested in what we're doing. Rather than take even the 110, 120 questions from CPM 101, the survey, we're narrowing it down to only seven data sets initially. We're going to keep it simple, we're going to start slow. So we're going to examine the area of code enforcement, but specifically, we want to compare percentage of cases resolved through voluntary compliance versus forced. We're going to examine the area of fleet management, but it'll be specifically fleet maintenance expenditures for police vehicles per mile driven. We're going to look at highways and roads, but it'll be the street sweeping expenditures per lane mile swept, and so on, HR, employee turnover, permitting expenditures, and so on. It's important that we measure not only apples to apples, but also, I'm going to even say, it's got to be Macintosh to Macintosh, or Granny Smith to Granny Smith. Let me go back to this one, this fleet management. Fleet maintenance expenditures for police vehicles per mile driven, that's a lot, that's a lot right in there. We've got to make sure that when we compare against cities, what we mean by fleet maintenance is the same as what they mean, that we're not just, that we're just talking about oil changes, not engine overhauls. That when we're talking about police vehicles, we talk, do you mean the ones with four wheels or the ones with two wheels, or both? And when you're talking about per mile driven, is that just city streets? Is that private roads? Is that chasing bad guys out in the desert, or are we just going to look at odometers? So it's very important that we take it slow, and we talk to each other, and we use the expertise within our own cities and with other cities that are also involved. So before, Bill, questions?
And not for the obvious reason that I'm going to ask this question, but the fire department is one of the largest departments we have in this city, and we are not measuring anything that they do?
Oh, not yet. Oh, we will, we had to choose seven in the beginning.
I got it, but-
Not in the beginning.
We've got the other big ones in there, and I'm just curious why we chose to leave 12 percent of our budget.
Well, it's not just Goodyear, I mean, these were the 10 cities that got together.
So this is not what we're doing, this is what the valley is doing.
No, 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 no. This is strictly the valley benchmark cities.
Thought this is what we were doing.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
No, no. No, our fire department has quite a few.
As Roseanne Zanna Dana would say.
Never mind, yes. Okay. All right, any, any other questions? We've talked about, I mean, I'm throwing a lot of acronyms, ICMA, CPM 101. It was okay?
You might want to put those on our acronym list, though.
Yes, the dictionary, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Is this taking like a full-time person to do? This is a lot of information and measurement, even just to do those surveys that you were talking about, I mean, that's just a great deal of time. Is some, is every department have someone's, is it, looking at, looking at them right there?
Are you looking at us, John?
Yes.
We're going to do it.
Mayor, Councilmember Osborn, it is, it's a priority effort. It's going to yield a lot of good data for great decision-making, and it will take resources. Right now, we are taking the team approach, so no one department does not have a large burden.
So every department like has somebody that's kind of gotcha.
And I would also just add that the three individuals here have an incredible passion for this, and while they're still doing their current work, this is something that was tossed under their plate, and they're doing an incredible job, so, thank you. And a lot of help from our directors and others as well. There are a lot of people engaged.
Sometimes when you say performance measurement, you don't have everybody run towards you to follow, it's sometimes a scary topic, but we have had fantastic support, executive management, department directors, members of the performance measurement team, representatives from all departments. So just in summary, we have, we knew why we wanted to do it, we know what makes a good program successful, and we've designed the system to be as successful as we possibly could have it. We've adopted the culture of performance, we still have yet to name our system, any suggestions are always welcome. We're hoping something calls to us. And selected the measures, we're working through the final details, as Councilmember Stip mentioned and asked for, seeing the whole book that is coming, we'll be very happy to deliver it to you. And right now, our focus is the creation of the analysis team, just hammering down those details and getting the data, establishing our baselines. That's really where our focus is now, and then we can move on to the consistent reporting and finishing our handbook, of course. So that's really where we are, and to summarize it, I will let Mr. Casella kind of wrap up the things that we want to make sure we don't do with our performance measurement system.
15 minutes of fame here. So basically, what we've done at the end here is list some of the common problems that you have with performance measurement. We have, obviously, have pitfalls. The first one is a complexity issue, and it's kind of a paradox because what you're undertaking is highly complex, and at the same time, you're trying to keep it as simple as you possibly can, which means to make it informative. And I think a lot of municipalities pursuing this, they make that mistake of making the program too big. I mean, when you model, essentially, you're making decisions, and that decision is to limit what you're gathering in terms of data, try to pick those things that are most relevant, and sometimes that can be very difficult to determine. So, so one of the things you have to be very careful of early on is try to keep it as simple as you can by also maintaining some robust kind of explanatory power in the model. Number two is probably the king of all pitfalls in performance measurement, which is, there's a lot of measurement and not much performance. I've done this several times, and each and every time I've done it, there was a lot of energy that went into gathering of data, and there was almost zero energy that went into taking the data and actually doing something with it. I think the team that we have, including the manager and also the deputy city managers, we've gone through a lot of effort to try and make sure that we're building a good foundation that we can actually go forward with and implement. And actually, Susan had a lot of really good input that adjusted the program going forward that focused a lot on how to make this actually be applicable to the things we do. So I think we're very cognizant of this one already and have worked hard to make sure that we're not going to end up in that same boat. Third one, of course, using it punitively or incorrectly, there's also a tendency to want to see a data point and say, well, oh my God, you know, look at this data point, here's what we need to do. And, you know, very rarely is life that simple, and so you don't want to be looking or be tied to any individual measure. You know, we use the example, a lot, crime went down 5 percent, oh, now we can cut the police budget by 5 percent. And no, I'm not advocating that. But you want to be a little bit more sophisticated in your analysis than that, so you have to be careful to kind of fall into that trap, oh, I've got this data point, and, you know, all of a sudden, now I know everything I need to know. Also, measuring what is easy to collect instead of instructive, really problematic. People tend to go, oh, yeah, we can measure this. And I think we've had kind of lengthy discussions on this, and we already are realizing that there is things that we do want to measure that probably we can't measure already. Of course, there's plenty we can measure already, and so we're going to start doing that. But again, as this thing goes forward, as the program evolves, and as we identify needs, maybe through the council or through management, we can say, well, you know, this would be a good piece of data that we would really like to have, let's put a system in place that would allow us to collect that data. So again, let's not get caught up in just collecting data for the sake of collecting data, let's have it speak to us in some way. Focusing on targets exclusively, again, it's kind of almost like the second one, context does matter. Sometimes targets are simply devices to send up a flag. We recently changed the property tax rate for reasons we could have never foreseen. Valuations dropped basically by 50 percent, and so in order to meet our debt obligations, we changed that parameter. Obviously, that target needed to be changed, you don't want to default on your debt. So, you know, again, you can't get so hung up on a measure that you forget to think- that you forget to think, you know, contextually about what you're doing and make good decisions. Again, seeking the silver bullet, this is also kind of repeating that. But again, emphasizing the fact that we live in a city of 70,000 people. It is a very large amount of activity that goes on a daily basis. And what we're trying to do with performance measurement is not just measure things. What we're trying to do is we're trying to model the activities of the city in such a way that it's informative to the decision-maker. The data is not going to replace the decision-making. The data is going to inform you on how to make decisions or at least what decisions are available to you, what the impacts of those decisions might be. And then you can make maybe more informed, better decisions because you've got that empirical data. Again, there's an awful lot going on at one time. You know, one of the things that when we're looking at things like epistemology, which is basically a fancy way of saying ways of knowing, the idea of common sense is really a misnomer. There is no such thing as common sense. You may think something looks a certain way. You dig a little deeper, you find out it's something very, very different. So again, you know, we need to be thorough and understand that this is a large modeling process. And again, the last one, of course, is, I think, my favorite. And that is, because my experience has not been good other places with getting that support. And I think the fact that we're sitting here today is an indication that obviously council was interested in this. And obviously, Brian has been very, very in touch with us in terms of really pushing this forward, pushing the deadlines. Wenette has come on board and really been right there with us, going over what we're doing, kind of guiding the process. So if the indication so far is indicative of where we're going to go, I don't think we're going to have too much trouble with the last issue, but it is something to be cognizant of, so, and that's all I have.
Great. And that concludes the presentation. I know it's late and I thank you for your time and attention. And we look forward to delivering you our handbook.
Any final questions? Thank you very much.
Yes, good, John, thank you.
So will we finish the evening up with 3.3 to discuss the Chapter 10 of the City Code specifically related to sanitation services? Jerry Postima? Postima? There, I got it right. Postima?
Jerry, are you in the house?
Yeah, he's coming up. You can stand up if you want to. Nobody's going to, they're not showing it, so stand up.
Let me go find Bill. Bill's gone. I don't know where Bill went.
He's walking because his back. You know, you can stay standing. Yeah, it's, oh, you can't stay standing, okay. I just, I just said, if you want to stand and stretch, go ahead. Nobody mind. Jerry, if they get up and stretched during this, it's been a long evening. So I told, so if somebody immediately stands up, don't get alarmed.
Not a problem. Thank you, Mayor and Council for having us and staying around this late. Appreciate it. I'd like to give an update on the sanitation bulk waste program. And with me tonight is Willie Elizondo. He is the superintendent for sanitation. And John Guo. I believe your title is ma- customer service, thank you. So I'd like to start with a bulk program objectives. Go over the historical overview. We're now into the program six months, going from twice a month to once a month bulk pickup. And we have some really good data that we want to share with you. We have the ordinance revision summary. And basically, that has to do with a coordinated effort between finance, legal, the police department, and sanitation. And takes into account the SB 1598 requirements for processes and appeal processes. Last, we want to do a program summary and then, of course, have council input. The goal is to have an ordinance to bring before council for consideration in about a month. On the overview, in 2011, citizen survey was conducted in October. 85% of respondents said they use bulk pickup on once a month or less basis. Follow-up survey indicated that 15% of those who used the service twice per month, about half were willing to go to once a month. 78% wanted the city at the time to go with once a month service with no immediate price increase. If you recall, at the time, there was about a $1.37 rate increase per customer per month being discussed. So one of the options was reduce the level of service and not increase any cost to the residents.
Do we, how many people did we actually seek on the, this citizen survey? Do we have the same as we always did for the other surveys, 400?
I don't really, I apologize, Mayor, I don't have that information. My understanding was that it was... It was, we think it was 468. I know it was up in that range, about 450 certainly.
Thank you.
So as a follow-up to the survey, we took a look at efficiencies and how to reduce the budget and actually meet that $1.37 obligation without doing a rate increase. That required a $300,000 reduction in the overall cost, which led us to reduce our workforce by four individuals and cut back on our fleet. Now, as part of that, we had told and met with our sanitation workers that they should start looking for jobs elsewhere, either in the city or outside the city, and gave them plenty of notification before implementing the program. We're extremely fortunate because in Public Works, we had the opportunity to do a lot of cross-training. And so all of the individuals, all four sanitation workers, were able to secure positions within the city that had become vacant. So we had two that went over to streets. We had one that went to water and one that went to wastewater to fill vacancies that were open at the time. So that took a few months. So overall, the program went really well. There was little or no impact to the headcount. And I think, as we heard tonight, the four individuals that were removed from sanitation were now reallocated. So we're still staying within the 511 headcount. For cubic carrots collected over the six-month period, you can see by this slide, from October 1st, 2012 through March 2013, 97.2% of all people put out two cubic carrots or less. That leaves 2.8%, which left out a little bit more than that. In each case, as we had promised to council, at the time of implementation of the program, we would use the opportunity to educate the individuals that may have put out too much. But we picked it up in every case. At no time did we deny anybody's service. Just a real quick overview for moving on to the next slide. Of the overages, 262 were actually only three cubic yards. So it was really close to being a much higher percentage. And at this point in time, I will hand it over to Willie Elizondo and let him discuss the bundling option and then get into the ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you can see, the slide here showing the four pictures, the top-left picture is showing you a bulk pile that's been set out, which measures out to about 12 and 1/2 cubic yards for crews to collect. As you can see, in reference to the equipment that's being used out there, the tractor, the bucket itself, and the size of the pile. Picture onto the, just right of that on the top is where crews have bundled that pile to illustrate the, how the pile can be condensed down from 12 cubic yards and brought it down in half to seven and a half cubic yards. The bottom two pictures there are showing you two different piles. They're both under the two cubic yards that our crews can collect and what these two piles are bundled. As you can see in the picture to the left, it's showing you where the possibility of just a crew member being able to pick that pile up and toss it into the truck for disposal. The key things to look at, at these bundled piles is the, the piles stay intact. So as what we experienced this last week and tonight, the winds that are blowing through the valley. So keeps the piles there in place and allows the crews to ensure that the community stays clean. Our streets are, it's not much of an ice where there's bulk debris is placed out there.
Did you, did you do that picture yourself? Is that a setup? I mean, I mean, even the tree in the bush there, I mean, that's really, that's a setup picture, come on.
That's actually what our crews called our office and asked us, did we set them up with that?
Yeah.
It's not my house.
We also did is a comparison of our services with other communities within the Goodyear area. As you can see, with the City of Abundale provides a monthly bulk collection with the three cubic yards for collection. Tolleson is, provides it twice a year with three cubic yards. A little less of what they provide compared to Goodyear, two cubic yards. You can see Buckeye and Phoenix provide service quarterly. The City of Peoria, once a year. And then the last two, Mesa and Surprise, provide scheduled collections. Surprise limiting the cubic yardage to 20 per year. The only exception, the City of Mesa, is a, all the other cities here on the, this slide is showing you that bulk is provided with the monthly fee. The City of Mesa has a separate charge that they charge, $19.99 per four cubic yards that are collected. So if a resident had five, they would pay an additional $19.99 to get that material collected. As a city ordinances, what we've done is did a little bit of housekeeping, clarifying what we've had in our chapter, moving all our definitions under the definition header of our ordinance and working with our legal, finance, and our police department, making sure that we had included and clarified some of the ordinances that we had in place. We had, just as Joe Spitz has presented with council before with SB 1598, ensuring that the appeal process is clarified in our, our chapter here. We also clarified the bulk placement of material for our customers in alleys as there was no clarification on how to place bulk in the alleys. And also placing is two days prior to their bulk collection to be consistent throughout the city.
Joe?
Appeal process, what would that be used for? Give me an example of the appeal process.
That, that's a great question. I think there are two instances, and correct me if I'm wrong, John. One would be on the actual process of being, having service terminated and then having an appeal where they can take that to the city manager level. The other one is we have in the ordinance, back in 2011, we added the ability to allow individuals under unique circumstances, like our military, if they're being reassigned overseas and they don't have the ability to rent their house out. And also people that had severe medical conditions, which limited them to occupying their house. They could provide a letter of request for a temporary termination of service. And then there's the process per SB 1598, where if they were turned down, they could go through an appeal as well.
Oh, turned down for that exemption? And then would the other one canceled? What would, what would happen? They were canceled in error or something, that they'd want to appeal?
It'd be billing errors.
What's that?
If they had a dispute with their bill, they would have.
Oh, okay, I got you, okay.
Joanne?
You know, I have a bunch of questions on the actual code of ordinances. Because of the time, I'll go ahead and email them to you. But since you are talking about bulk placement, one of my questions had to do with the alleyways. And I know that within the ordinance, it spoke of, I probably won't be able to find it. I think it spoke of it had to be placed five feet from the fence and it could not be in the way of cars that may come through the alley. And so I'm sitting there thinking about, well, how, how wide is an alleyway to begin with? And if you have to be five feet away from a fence and your neighbor's five feet away from their fence and they're in the dead center of the way and then a car comes, you're not allowed to be in the, that's... So help me with, with what that's supposed to be because I couldn't get my thoughts around that one.
It's a good question, Vice Mayor Osborne. The clarification that we had to do is with curbside service is to be consistent with those residents. And it's going to be on a case-by-case situation with the alley residents, understanding that they're not really, they're limited in the space that they have behind their homes. So it's not to be strict on those residents to say, you're past the five feet. You know, it's to allow for traffic to pass through there, not to include city services also for other utilities such as COGS, APS, to be able to pass through and do the work that they need to do in the alleys.
Then is it worth having that stated within the ordinance, that it needs to be five feet from the fence? I mean, I, I just, I question that.
I think that's an excellent question. And I think that that's the reason we're here, to take your input. And I think we need to go back and review that. So thank you for the comment.
Thank you. Bill?
Kind of on that issue is, and I realize John Casella just sat here 10 minutes ago and told us there's no such thing as common sense. So I'm out of the equation. But why, why wouldn't we have the bulk service in front of the house even with the alleyways? Is there, you know, like it, like it is everywhere else? I mean, that, that may solve this problem.
Councilmember Stip, as you recall, when the services were provided to switch from a manual collection to curbside, this was one of the recommendations that was provided by the SWAC, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, to maintain alley service for those residents that, that had it.
Are some of those streets narrower? Is that why, to not have bulk waste out there on the street? I'm, I guess I'm thinking of like Loma Linda, which, and that's alleyways.
Wide.
But that is wide.
It's very wide, yeah.
Okay, so then, no, I guess I can't.
Was it desire of occupants?
Not other, not say, forget Loma Linda, think of the other roads around there. Are they, maybe they're not as wide as that one is.
Did the occupants have that desire? I mean, was that something that...
Mayor, some of the residents had voiced that concern that they wanted to keep that service. That was the reason why they, they purchased them properties with alley service.
Sure.
Molly?
I am, I've already told you, Jerry, I'm going to be emailing you some of my concerns. Well, they're not really concerns. I've read the ordinance and I've gone line by line. And there's some that makes no sense and some that says you can put your trash out seven days ahead when we're supposed to only put it out two days ahead, right?
Well, that was lined through, wasn't it?
Well, we, we still need to clarify the stuff. So instead, I'm not going to go through it. The out, with the alleys, so many of the folks in North Subdivision that have alleys for their trash, they put it in the back. And I don't know that they really knew we weren't supposed to have it out more than a couple of days ahead. And it wouldn't be in front of a house and make the whole neighborhood look junky. Because some folks do put stuff out really early for long periods of time. And unless they have an HOA that really comes down on them. Where, if where I live, we're not allowed to put anything out until 6 o'clock the night before the pickup. So we have to store our stuff somewhere and it cannot be seen and it cannot be in your backyard. So, you know, some folks have more strict rules than others, so.
Those are excellent points, Councilmember Campbell. And we want to address all those. And just to touch on some of those alleyway pickups, a lot of those residents were given that special treatment simply because they didn't really have a full gate or access to the front yard. So instead of hauling it through the house, which I think we would all think would be a bit of a challenge, they wanted to keep that, that access to the alley.
That's great information.
So we, because we've had that internal dialogue several times. Why do we allow some people to go out front and 400 basically to go to the alley? And if they don't have any front access, it's a challenge for them.
Sure, sure.
Bill?
Since we're not going to go line by line, let me just ask a couple of very, very basic questions about the bulk trash. We, we want it bundled. And I see the size difference that it makes through the pictures. But you're going to put it into a machine that's going to compact it. So whether I put it in this big or I put it in already that big, either way, it's going to get compacted to that size. Have I missed something on that?
I think that, Councilmember Stip, I think that you're right on. That's, that's a great comment. Where the challenge is and where we want to pick up the efficiencies is not have that other piece of equipment out there, the grappler tractor, to pick up those large piles, put it into the rear packer. So if the piles are more manageable and one individual can grab it by the bundle and toss it in the back, we can pick up efficiencies, less equipment, less personnel.
I'm going to, I'm going to struggle with that one because I see one guy driving the grappler. So if there's one person walking behind the sanitation truck, throwing it in there, it's still one guy.
And again, those are excellent comments. If we can reduce the equipment, that's where we can pick up the efficiencies.
Joe?
Yep, but I look at that picture there that's unbundled. And I'm looking at one guy picking up pieces of it and throwing it in the back. If it's bundled, I'm grabbing it by the string and throwing it in. So you've got much more effort getting something like that in the back of the truck than if they've got it bundled. That's the way I kind of look at it from time standpoint. Because if you've got it laying all over the place, it takes you a while to pick all that stuff up. That's where I'm kind of...
That's where I'm kind of, kind of seeing where maybe some of the, some of the efficiencies may be.
Yeah, I can, I can definitely see that, but I think in listening to the, particularly the residents of Historic Edger that have been very vocal about the bulk trash issue, you know, one of the biggest complaints is not only do I have these other restrictions and now I've got to spend the time to tie it up and all the rest of that. And that, while I have some difficulty having sympathy for that, it, because the argument is we come by with a machine and grab it, so why does it have to be, why does it have to be bundled? And so I, I think it's part of a bigger discussion. If we're going to go to a manual system, which now I worry about worker injury, that kind of thing, but if we're going to go to a manual system, the bundle then makes total sense. If we're going to stick with the grappler system and we're going to use mechanical, then maybe we can start to apply a little bit more common sense to that. So I just kind of throw that out there for your, for you to chew on.
And that's, excellent comment.
I have a question. I know we've had a couple of complaints where people have much larger properties and so of course they have much larger bulk trash. Is it, and I'm sorry I don't know this, but is it possible, can I call you in advance and say, I have a little bit extra, can I pay a little bit extra for the pickup, or is that not an option right now?
Councilmember Barber, one of the things that we want to propose in the ordinance is that there be an addition that if there is a unscheduled pickup like you're describing, we can go ahead and do that. And then by resolution, the council can pass a fee that would be associated with that and help the residents out in that manner.
Thank you.
Sherry?
I know one of the problems we had up in Australia was a lot of people would get these huge piles because they'd hire the landscapers. And the landscapers, because they didn't want to go pay the money to go dump it, would just like leave it sometimes between the houses and wouldn't bundle it. So, you know, I understand what you're saying. As a resident, if I had someone cut my trees and they got the thorns on it this big, honey, I'm not bundling that if, if I paid the landscaper and I understand that. So I, I don't know if the grappling system is better because, you know, I, I think we had a problem with that and then they're putting them out at the wrong time. So I think we just need to keep educating. I don't know how you get to the landscapers if you, when you just see them, you just let them know because by the time they've put it out, the homeowner a lot of times gone, you know, they're not knowing when the homeowner's there.
Well, I know we've gotten some complaints of some of the more elderly residents we have that they do not have, they do not have the capacity or the, the strength or the, you know, to be able to bundle them in those small bundles. And you write the scratches and so forth, but this retired person does hire her, you know, to have it shipped, taken away. But it would be nice to know if we had a program that if they wanted to pay the additional for the big, with not having to bundle it and set it out in front at a certain timeframe, that we could do that type of pickup. I don't know. I don't know how feasible it would be and what it would cost and if it would be acceptable as far as the total cost to the resident.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Sheriff, or Lord, excuse me. But it all came together. I'm sorry. Didn't use common sense.
I, I put the word down, I struck it out now, so I'm going to take it out of my vocabulary.
Oh, I can't.
But we will, we'll definitely look at those options and come back with a price. And I think it's a very valid reason to initiate that service. On top of that, we're going to get into the next slide and Willie's going to give an update on a special deal that we worked out with a couple of local providers that will help residents as well.
So our next slide here showing the partnerships that we've been able to work out with the, to the waste providers that are out there with public services and waste management. And what we've been able to work out with each of these facilities with the Republic Services owning the Southwest Regional Landfill in Buckeye and the White Tanks Transport Station owned by Waste Management here in, in Goodyear. What we've been able to work out with these two waste providers is a discounted rate for our residents to have waste that they can take down to either of these facilities and offering any, anything weighing less than five hundred pounds, it's about a ten dollar fee that they're going to pay. And then anything over the five hundred pounds, there's a discounted rate from the actual gate rate fee. As you can see, the fees are, they're on this slide. The only stipulation for our residents is they need to provide proof that they are paying for sanitation services with the city.
Joanne?
I think this is wonderful and, and this is definitely something that we will need to let our citizens know about. But when it comes to the ordinance, landscaping debris is green waste, correct?
Correct.
Okay. On ten dash three dash one, you have hauling, spill proof vehicles, spillage dumping, and it says it is unlawful for any person to knowingly transport or cause to be transported any refuge, trash, garbage, debris, green waste, hazardous water, yada, yada, within our city. So that goes against you being able to drive over to landfill if it says right here you can't transport it. Am I, am I missing something here? I mean, that's what I'm reading it as.
Vice Mayor Osborne, the intent of that was to make sure that the piles were covered, transported properly.
But it doesn't even say that.
So I, I think that's an excellent point. We'll go back with our attorney and have that better defined.
Thank you. Because as I read it, I'm sitting there going, oh, I can't put in my truck all of this landscaping to go over here to dump it for ten bucks or whatever. So, thank you.
Excellent point. Thank you.
Also, what we've been able to work out with the White Tanks Transport Station is at no charge, no charge to our residents is electronic waste and bulk recycling that they can drop off. And all they need to do is when they drive up to the scale house is let the attendant there know that they're bringing this material there and it's open to, to the residents during their operating hours.
How are we getting this information out?
This, this information was published here in the InFocus magazine that just went out in March, April.
Is it ever sent out with the bills? Is it ever sent out with bills with a, you know, to me, that's, that's where they're really going to notice it and read it when they look at their bill. Is there any way we could do an insert into that?
Mayor Lord, yes, that's, that's definitely an option that we can have. There's actually a spot that we can print at the bottom of the bill and anybody who has a sanitation account, we can work with finance and make sure that information's available.
That would be great. Bill, do you have the question, somebody had their? Joe? Okay, thank you.
So our final recommendation, continue with the monthly pickup, bulk pickup, and leave it at two cubic yards. Incorporate the feedback we've received from you tonight and then the emails we will anticipate over the next few days. And then sanitation staff will continue to monitor the volumes and will look at efficiencies like we talked about with the bundling and then continue to market and educate our, our residents on the program.
Joe?
How expensive it is, because I, I saw your earlier slide where you talked about the three cubic yard, and I know Abundale does three cubic yard, you know, for once a collection. And you had a certain number, quite a few, that just hit the three cubic yard. How expensive would it be to jump that two to three?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Fazillo, great question. We've done the analysis on it and for the, I think we can put it on Elmo. Can we get Elmo, please?
There you go.
Here it is.
So under the three cubic yard scenario that you had spoken about, it would be an additional approximately forty-five thousand dollars per year. And then for the four cubic yards, approximately eighty-five thousand dollars per year. That's, we have to, basically, we have to take into account that every resident would then be eligible to put that amount out. And once you get to four cubic yards, there could be some further impacts related to additional staffing.
I was going to say, what if there was twice a year at spring and fall when we know it's cutting season, just to, you know, throw that in there, that we went to three cubic yards? I mean, or whenever, I mean, when, when we know that that increase, I mean, when we think of some of these homes that have all these trees, and then I know we heard from somebody in Vanderbilt Farms that has more acreage, we heard from, you know, there's a lot of, when it hits the time where it's pruning season and that two cubic, it's just not, just not enough. Is there, is, is there a way to say maybe it's twice a year that we will take on a bigger load? I don't, I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there.
Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Osborne, we'd be happy to look at that. We do know from our data that we've gathered that typically March is our heavy month. So you have some really good thoughts there. So we can definitely go back and take a look at that, see what costs there could be incurred just for that month.
I, I would appreciate, I don't know if that just will throw everybody for a loop and I don't know, but it's, it's worth the thought. It's, it's worth it.
And the question as far as how you communicate that to the citizens for the additional pickup one, one time a year. So, yes, there, there are a lot of challenges with that.
It's spring cleaning.
It is spring cleaning. But it's certainly something we look at. I, I do have, I, I think there are a lot of challenges with that, though.
I was just thinking the billing alone.
Yeah. Bill?
Okay, at the risk of tipping the hat to the ten people that are watching this at eight thirty, if they're even left. Today, we will pick up your three cubic yards and leave you a note, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, he said earlier, we have never denied anyone pickup.
Right, right.
So if we don't make any change and just leave it and continue to pick it up.
The eight people.
We're still okay, right? There's no, there's no forty-five thousand dollar cost, there's nothing else changes. If we change nothing and continue to do exactly what we're doing today and continue to pick it up, we're okay. Until it becomes a widespread epidemic and then we've got to take action.
And I believe, Councilmember Stipp, that the challenge there is when does it become time to enforce it? Is it when it's at twenty thousand, thirty thousand, forty thousand? So the challenge is always going to be when we do the cost analysis and work towards efficiencies, when do we then go back and say we need to increase the rates to cover whatever this unknown is?
When we measure the performance based on the tonnage that we collect. I am not, and I'm not being funny at this point, but that's essentially how we're going to do it, is we're going to measure the performance and we're going to know over time how much tonnage we're picking up and then we're going to be able to increase our rate across the board. So rather than solving a problem that doesn't exist today with forty-five thousand, maybe we just leave it and then measure what we're doing. I'm just throwing it out.
That's what they did, though.
Sherry?
Well, and I think we need to educate a little bit better because even looking at your pictures, I couldn't tell you if you put two cubic feet in front of me as I was cutting my tree, I wouldn't know two to three cubic feet or two point five. So I, I think a lot of people, unless it's like the thirty-nine times there was, you know, eight cubic yards, I think that we can tell is a little bit out. But if it's like two point two, I'm not going to know the difference there. So if we leave, I'm agree with Bill, you just leave it the same unless mine's unbundled.
Don't I remember pictures at one time, like a size of refrigerator with a big bulk on pickup truck or something?
But that doesn't help me because of branches.
I, I totally agree with you.
If, if volume or if mass is not ever, you know, greater or less than, so just because you smoosh it down, it's less, I don't get that. I'm having, it's late and I'm just having.
I'm not buying into that either.
Any other questions?
You know, every time they say bundle, all I can think of is that Cox commercial, we all bundle. I mean, you know, I'm like, oh my gosh, you must bundle. Oh, goodness. Now we're done.
It's always a pleasure talking trash with the council.
Ryan, are you summing it up or are you, are you asking? Yes, okay.
And with that, do you have any questions?
I think I just said that a minute ago, but nobody was listening at this table, so. Any questions? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Ryan?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to, I, I know it's been a long night and the reason this was a long night, everything we talked about impacts the budget. If we change bulk trash, if we change health care, if we, you know, so, and, and even on the performance measures, that, that is very important for us to, to get a, a handle on that before we go into the budget year. So appreciate your patience tonight. We, we covered a lot. I do have just a couple of very brief items, if I may, and it's timely. This is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. So I couldn't wait till next Monday to tell you about this. It is this week and it's, it, it is, had a chance to send a message out to our, our telecommunications dispatchers and personnel earlier, but it's time to honor them. They're the lifelines during a lot of medical, fire, police related emergencies. So it's this one time a year where we truly take the time to, to thank them for all their efforts, tremendous dedication. They're the voices over the, the phone lines that, that calm our citizens and those that are going through some really tough times. So an important part of the, the service that we provide as a city. So they're behind the scenes heroes and we just want to recognize them. So that is going on all week if you have an opportunity to send emails that direction. The other is Splash Pad's now open at Goodyear Community Park for the one citizen that's listening, but so you're aware. It opened today. We, we ended up doing resurfacing and installed and improved the surface this year because there were some safety issues with that. So the pool, though, doesn't open until the twenty-fifth, but the Splash Pad is open. And then the last item, just it's not as timely, but Chief, Police Chief mentioned our eleventh annual Desert Dog K-9 Trials, of which we were part of. Goodyear Police K-9 Unit competed, it was in Scottsdale, eleventh annual, as I said. Sixty police dog teams were judged in tactical obedience, building searches, area searches, handler protection, and scent detection. Boy, they probably go nuts after a long meeting tonight on the scent detection. But Office.
Excuse me?
Wait a minute. What was that supposed to mean?
There was a joke.
I, I got it.
Officer Josh, I'm sorry, Josh White and K-9 Rudy, they placed fifth in the building search competition, so yay. Officer Ben Armstead and K-9 Remco placed fourth. So considering the overall scores, ninety-eight out of a hundred, didn't even place throughout this entire competition. So we, we're proud of our K-9s and the, and the handlers and the entire team that performed so well. And by the way, that translates to service to the community when they're out there in a real life situation. So Chief, congratulations.
Do you mind if I comment on that?
No, I was just saying, council comments or any current reports you'd like to give?
Actually, no, I went to the dog show. I went to the K-9 Trials and it, it was great. It was fantastic. I took my daughter out there and so Goodyear comes out and my daughter says, oh, I don't want to be a bad guy in Goodyear. He has a bite, so it was, it was great and it was so fun to see our city represent, so thank you.
Glad you're down there, she's not going to be a juvenile delinquent now.
Any other input? Well, I just want to thank staff for all the great presentations tonight and the, and also all staff that's had to stay around this late hour tonight. Thank you for your impatience, but I think that you, you had an opportunity to ask all the questions and have a discussion tonight. I think everybody's going home satisfied in that respect. So I'm going to, about to adjourn the meeting and the next one will be April twenty-second, which will be a